Going to call to order today's city council meeting, the Jackson City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the chambers. Are there any special openings? All right. At this time, I would like to invite to the podium my friend Pastor Jose Hines of Christ Tabernacle Church, also known as CTC in South Jackson at this time. And immediately following our ask, if Councilman Foot will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will we please rise? Pastor Hines?
Thank you to you all for giving me this opportunity to lift you in prayer. It's about, eyes are closed. Our God and our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you just for the privilege of life itself. You didn't have to wake us up, but you did, and we're grateful. I pray for our city council members. First of all, God, I pray for their personal lives. Yet they are council members, they are still human. And so we thank you, Heavenly Father, that you're God that is able to bless them in their personal lives. Bless their families, Heavenly Father, give them strength, personify the talents, gifts, and abilities that you've invested in their life as they become public servants. And then their public life, God, because it's all about decision making. Give them the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that is needed to make the kind of decisions and make the decisions that will direct our city to build on a better quality of life for all of the citizens of Jackson. We know, God, that there are vices and there are enemies, and there are things that are seeking to prevent us from being a great city. But yet, God, we thank you because all power is in your hands, and you know, and you know how to do things in the most powerful and prolific way. I pray, God, that Jackson will become a great model of other cities, not just because it's a capital city, but it's because the city, God, that you have built and that you are strengthening. Now, Heavenly Father, bless all administrators, bless all of the department heads, and every employee of the city of Jackson. Touch them and be with them, God. I pray for strength and unity in the city of Jackson because I know, God, through all of the tragedies and everything that we face, you are a God, and you're God by yourself. And so I just want to thank you right now, God. Give us a spirit of rejoicing, Heavenly Father, by continuously building Jackson, whether it's business-wise, residential, it doesn't matter. Just strengthen this city, Heavenly Father. And I know that if you do that, we'll be careful to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise is within your power, and I thank you. I lift this prayer because I believe Jesus, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Want to thank Pastor Hines for that wonderful and much-needed prayer, and it's always good to see you, sir. At this time, we're going to go to our public comments. Colleagues, we have two public comments to be offered up, no, three. Three public comments to be offered up today. Those that will be participating in this session, you will have three minutes. There is a yellow marker that will let you know that you have 30 seconds left, and after the 30 seconds, you will have a red one that will let you know that you, that your time is over. Please abide by our chamber rules when it comes to this. So at this time, we'll have Mr. Holt.
Good morning. I never thought that I'd be back before you all, the city council, so soon, but I had no choice. I was in court on the 11th of this month. I was in court on the 11th of this month, and this, I'd like for you all to read this. This is the judgment by Judge Jeffrey Reynolds. Okay. Well, anyway, I'd like for you all to know that he said that all activity with the motorcycles that's next door to my home were to stop. He said that there would be no more partying, no more gatherings, and it was effective immediately. When you read that, you will see that. But it's still going on. We had the hearing on the 11th, and on the 13th, Jonathan Holm, the owner of the building, and his friends, the motorcycle gang, the outcasts, they decided to show us that no matter what the judge says, the law says, or what happens, they're going to do what they want to do. And they made the whole weekend miserable. I mean, they're trying to destroy us, and they're doing a good job. It's hard to eat, it's hard to sleep, it's hard to rest. And I don't know, why are we being prosecuted? The people that's supposed to stop this, where are they? You're the leaders, please, whoever's supposed to stop this, you all make them do their job. I know they're not going through this, but we're going through it, and we're suffering. I, I'm not asking anything of you all that you wouldn't ask for yourself. All we want is peace in our home. All we want to do is be able to live. We've gotten older, we did our work, we put in our time. We just want to be able to live in peace until the Lord calls us home. I'm a caregiver. I know I talk to you all about my wife. My wife, she's not in good shape. I'm a caregiver for her. I take care of her. I'm asking you all, please, please, whatever you have to do to make whoever needs to do their job to stop this, to stop it. Because these people, they haven't slowed down. The judge ordered that this was going effective immediately. These people made a parade around this parking lot, inside it, up and down the street to show us that they don't care. They really don't care. And then Chief Watts told me, he said, well, Mr. Holt, you didn't have any footage to show what's going on when you were in court, and, you know, when we sent police cars over there, there's no one there. Can you get us some footage? I did that. I took a chance because I feel that these people are dangerous. I took a chance. I went outside with my phone, got video, sent Chief Watts and Captain Lonnie. And he said, well, they're probably going to find him, and they might give him some jail time. That's all fine, but in the meantime, we're studying being persecuted by these people. Captain Lonnie of precinct two, he gave me these. He went and bought these. He said, put these on your wife so she won't hear the noise. Why do we have to live like this? I mean, he's a good person, he's a good man, and he's trying to help, but why do we have to live like this? Why does she have to put headphones on? One of these said, come from over in Pearl, and he said that they use them at the gun range. No way that you can hear the noise. But the thing is, why does she have to be put through this? Why? Why is it we can't live like normal people? Why is it we can't get the help? I thought the law is for everyone, but when it comes to us, it seems like the law is different. I'm not saying anything against JPD because I don't want them to feel I am. You have good polices. But then there are some that seem like they just don't care. They don't care. Some seem like, if we come out enough, you just call in. But they're not going through what we're going through. I have to call. Where else can I go? What else am I to do if I don't depend on the police and the help of the police to serve and protect?
Thank you.
The law should be about it by everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. And just, Mr. Holt, just for clarity, there, there was a court order by municipal judge, and you want to make sure that's enforced? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. All right.
I just, I just want to ask Mr. Holt, I appreciate you coming to share this with us today, and I understand, I deeply sympathize with your situation. What is your address, and what is the address of the building that, what's that?
It's 518 Judicy Street, G-U-I-D-I-C-I Street, Jackson Miss 39204, and this building is 510 Judicy Street.
Okay.
And, sir, could I say one thing, please? Until these people are out of that building, it's not going to stop. They have their motorcycles parked in it. They come over, they leave their cars, they get on those bikes, rev them up in the parking lot, do what they want, leave, come back. It's not going to change. Please have somebody that, please stop this. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Harley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd, I'd like to hear if the, if the council allow maybe Chief to, to comment on that. And while he comes forward, I have a similar situation with the club off of Raymond Road every day. It gets to a point where it's so nerve-wracking, day to day, that you can't live, you know, you just, there's just no way to live there. I get text messages every time this place is open.
Yes.
Every, because there is continual, continual problem. And we live in a city now where nerves are on edge. People are stressed out, and when they get stressed to that level, bad things happen. And so we have to do something to reduce that stress level. And I just want to hear from the chief on, hey, what's being done? What can be done in light of the judge order now? What can we do? Can we get Capitol Police involved? I don't, I don't know, just...
Well, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. First of all, I've met with Mr. Holt several times in my office. I went to his home and spoke with him. I also have a meeting set up with Mr. Holmes, the owner of the business, to speak with him about these issues. We've even set up a dummy car at that location, a police vehicle. He has my information. I've talked to Mr. Holt. Whenever they come by, communicate with him. He contacts me. Also Assistant Chief Watts and Captain Lonnie. We are working with the courts in this particular issue. Actually, my team went to court with him, environmental court, to address these issues. We are well aware of the judge's order. We fully support the judge's order, and we plan on enforcing the judge's order. When he contacted me about them coming back that day, we sent the precinct captain over there to address that issue. But we are aware of his issue. It's very concerning, it's very problematic, and we will address this issue as we continue to move forward. But I've taken several steps to address this issue, but there is no silver bullet when it comes to these type of issues. These motorcycles are loud by nature. They're loud, they're Harley-Davidsons. But when I meet with him, I'm going to explain the resources that we have expended on Judicy Street about their motorcycle club, their parties. But we're going to work in lockstep with the judge to make sure that the order is fully enforced, because there's no way to live. I went to his home. I met with him. I saw his property. I walked around that building. So we're very concerned about it, and we are continuing to address this issue.
And I certainly appreciate that. And again, I know Captain Lonnie has got his hands full, and he and the precinct warrant commander, they've been checking out the site that's...
What's the address of the location?
It's over near, it's the old Sunflower Building off of Raymond Road. We permitted it several years ago, and I've gotten hundreds of complaints. Again, when neighbors get to the point where they're stressed out...
Yes.
...bad things happen. And we, and we got a situation here where, I mean, where earmuffs ain't going to do it.
Oh, yeah, and I don't know where the beach headphones come from. I don't, we don't hand those out to address noise in the city of Jackson.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate everything you do.
All right. Councilwoman Lindsey?
Yes, Chief, before you leave, I just wanted to thank you for the amount of time and energy you have put into this issue. We, we've been dealing with this for many, many, many months, I mean, my office and you. But I am grateful to you and to Chief Watts, and I am hoping that we really can reach some sort of terminus on this, and I'm really glad that you're meeting with that property owner.
Yes.
So great, grateful to you for that.
And hopefully, we'll come up with a resolution once I meet with him. But CCID does not enforce city orders.
Right.
That's the issue that we'll be facing with that.
That's right. And also, I'm grateful to Judge Reynolds because he, he really did take this matter seriously, and I'm, I'm grateful to him as well. I'm glad you're working together. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One other thing, Planning Department, have you, you coordinated all your efforts?
I've been speaking with Esther Ainsworth about the issue. She's talked to Mr. Holt on multiple occasions. The ultimate resolution is for them to not use that building. Because as long as they're using the building, as long as he's the owner of that building, you're going to have these issues and these problems. But the judge, he gave a strict order. So if he violates, he's going to spend some time in jail, probably sixty to ninety, ninety days.
Got to do it.
All right. Councilwoman Lee?
Chief Wade, thank you for all that you're doing. It's just sad that this is the second time he's had to come before us with this same issue, so I'm pleading with you to please remedy this so that he does not have to come. I'm worried about the well-being of his wife and him, and the fact that we're giving out headphones. That's unacceptable.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from.
Unacceptable. So please do everything you can. I don't want to see him in here again.
Yes, I don't either. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next, we have Michael McCola, and he's speaking on cereal for summer children's food getaway. Michael McCola? All right. Next, we have Mr. Lee Bernard, items forty and forty-one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Again, my name is Lee Bernard, and just a quick comment on forty and forty-one. First off, I'd like to thank Councilman Foot for putting in that resolution to establish an abandoned property task force, and we thank you for that. Second thing, forty-one, as I read forty-one, it talks about a resolution for a, for something was vetoed for an employment agreement with the Jackson Police Chief, Assistant Chief of Police, and Jackson Fire Chief. As someone that grew up in Georgetown, live in South Jackson, I think whatever the police chief needs, or the firemen, they need more men, so I hope that means you go give them some more money. That's why I want to make a comment on that one. The second couple of items relate to Brookwood subdivision. At the end of Brookwood Place, there's a sinkhole, and it's getting larger and larger, and I need the city to do something about it. And also in Brookwood, about three-quarters of the way down, just before you get to Fairway Cove, we have a creek that runs under the street, and the street is falling, and the street is falling apart. We need someone to take a look at that, and I will send an email to someone and give them pictures of what I'm talking about. But it's in bad condition, and we, we, we need your help down in the Brookwood subdivision. And again, I thank you and Mr. Foot, just so you will know, Georgetown Homeowners Association is being put back together so we can complain about the houses in Georgetown, because we have a lot of abandoned houses out there, and of course, we need to do something about those also. And so I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Next, we have Stephanie Chapman. Well, let me say this. We have a group of Ash Jan, I believe. If you all want to yield to each other, I would read off the names, Stephanie Chapman, Florine Keeler, Johnny Bird, Ernest Ward, and Princess Barber. If you all want to yield to each other, you may do so. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Stephanie Chapman, and I'm going to yield my time to the vice president of the association. Mr. Bird, would you please come forward? And our president is here, Mr. Ernest Ward. So they're going to do all the talking.
Good morning. My name is Johnny Bird. I'm the vice president of the Association of South Jackson Neighborhoods. Let me give you a little brief of who we are. South Jackson, Association of South Jackson Neighborhoods is combined with what is four, five, six, and seven. Started off in 1979 as a social group, and now it's morphed into something new. We are here collectively to make sure that our voice be heard and our actions get answered. Again, I'm going to yield my remaining time to Mr. President, Mr. Ernest Ward. Before I do that, I'd like to give my condolences out to Mr. Ratliff. As you all know, Mr. Ratliff filmed you all for years, and I worked with him as coworker. So Ernest?
How you all doing this morning?
Good morning.
Okay. I normally don't come to the council meeting. Reason why I don't, because it seem like nothing don't get done. But I, someone encouraged me to come today because a lot of things that I'm tired of, and quite sure everybody else too. I want to pass this out, I would like to have this back. Like to have that back. What we here today is, I wish the mayor was here this morning, but he's not. We here because of city orders. The city orders that I just passed out, which everybody probably knows the city orders, it's not being enforced. I believe that if we do enforce the laws that are already on the books, our city would be in a better place. I would like for you all to look at that when she give you all the information. These are, these are things that everyone in this room that live in Jackson struggle with, and been going on for years. We at Ash Jan decided to take more approach to not waiting on the city to do anything. We're going to do it ourselves because we are tired listening to speeches. We tired listening to other stuff that go on in the council. We want to know the reason why these city orders are not being enforced. On that paper, you have eighteen wheelers, city orders, junk cars, city orders. We have eighteen wheelers, city orders, and you know eighteen wheelers all around this city, tearing up our streets, doing everything, but we cannot get it enforced. That's a problem. Our quality of life have gone down from seven and a half years, and I'm tired. And I'm tired, and we're going to take, we not waiting on election time. We're not going to do that because you as our leader, we shouldn't have to keep coming. Here the gentleman saying that, why you got to come more than one time, so I hear it on the news, same old issues over and over and over. It's got old. Are you going to be a leader of this city? Or we need to find somebody else? Because we need to find someone going to take care of business for us, and we're going to find that somebody if you don't do your job. If you're not, if anybody work a job, if you don't do your job, you get a written written man, a written reprimand, verbal termination. I think you all had time, a lot of time. It getting worse and worse. Our city being destroyed because you all going to take care of business. Now, we're going to give you all three to five days to let us know why these city orders not being enforced. And if we don't get that, we're going to take the appropriate action on our part because we are tired. I'm doing all, we doing all that I can to protect our neighborhood. We can't get no help from our leaders. Say they going to do this and do that. It's not happening. Like I said, I normally don't come here because I hear the stories. I decided to come this time because a friend of mine has encouraged me to come to, the mayor need to hear this. I'm sorry that he not here, but I wish he was. It's time out. Playtime is over. It's over. When people are working hard in neighborhoods, trying to keep things and do things to keep viable neighborhoods, and the city leaders won't do nothing, that's a problem. We got a leadership problem. Serious problem. And we going to make some changes if y'all don't make no changes. We got to. This ain't about being friends who I care about, all that. That's our problem. We got to take care of the business of the city. How many time I had the call, I get threatened coming to my house because eighteen wheeler, people driving four-wheelers in the neighborhood, loud music, all these is old city orders. And we cannot get an officer out there and come out there. If they do come, they don't even know the city orders. I had an officer that came out, a sergeant. Chief, I will give you that person name. You know, came out there and, and first of all, I think Chief was trying to get the officer to understand you need to be know the president of the neighborhoods, because they know what's going on. Chief, we got officer, you know, like they're not interested in that. And which on my law enforcement officer myself, I'm retired with the state, and I work with JPD. But when you, when you call an officer out there, and they don't know the rules themselves, that's a problem. That's a problem. Because if you tell a person that it's against city orders to bring eighteen wheelers in the city, and they tell the person just move it out of the way, that's a problem. Because I end up get calls all the times, how to deal with my neighbor, I get fired. I just went to court on a person brought eighteen wheeler in, lied to the judge and everything, but the judge understood that, that I was strict with city orders, and she dismissed it because it was city orders. This guy want to do what he's want to do, and that's what wrong with our city. The reason why we, the mayor, his leadership, reason why we not being respected because the way, what, way we are, we allow this stuff continue to go on and on. Why we got to talk about neighbor's cities? Are we not that, are we this, or we don't know no better? That's not the issue. The issue is that we need to do our job. We need to do our job. And I am saying, is anybody work a job, you don't do the job, they fire you. They fire you. Do your job. We are expecting a request from the mayor office in three to five days why these city orders is not being enforced. Why I got to risk my life? People coming to my house, threatening my family, because I'm trying to do what's right according to those city orders. And, 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 and we get a calls, they put them in the three one one. Don't even work. I'm quite sure you probably got thousand, thousand call, same old stuff, over and over. I'm tired of it. We need to see some action. We need to see some action. Start talking about each other. Get some work done. That's what I want to see. If you love me, do some work. If you love your community, do some work. And start talking about, one thing, I end up, all y'all go to church, and y'all probably know this scripture, Second Scripture eighty twelve. If there be first a willing man, it's accepted according to a man has, not according to ye has not. Stop talking about what you don't have and all that. Do, take care of what you got. And black folks, oh, black folks should know better. We always done great with little. Always. We ain't doing nothing what we got, and guess what happened? When you don't do what's right, what you have, it be taken away from you. That's why the state trying to take things away from you. We ain't doing nothing with it. And I am saying is this, do your job. Stop fighting. I'm not looking for no job for nobody, don't want no job, I retired, God bless me, guess what? I can leave. Pay cash for it if I want to. That's not what I want to do. I want to stay in my community.
That's right.
And I'm asking you all, do your job and make it happen. If you're not, we're going to take the next step ourself. I'd like for someone to respond. I see the mayor not here, I see, uh, uh...
Dr. Omar.
Dr. Omar, a representative. If you're not, you don't have nothing to say, make sure the message get to the mayor. Because we are not playing anymore. We not waiting election time. Okay? Make sure he tell him that. Thank you.
Mr. War... I'll give him a hand.
I want my papers back.
Mr. War, and I want the administration to know, this, this is not the first time Mr. Ward and Councilman Stamps actually put a letter similar to this together about five years ago. And what we did in our communities where there were houses where there were violations, parking on the grass, we would fold this up in an envelope, either Stamps or myself would sign it and put it on their door, and just trying to get some traction. At that time, we didn't have that many code enforcement officers. But when we talk about organizations like this taking action, and they shouldn't have to, there was a service station on Rainy Road that was, that was just in deplorable shape. The citizens of the community got together, put their own money up, and tore it down. And while they were tearing it down the right way, of course, planning at that time, the director at that time tried to stop it. But at the end of the day, when people get sick and tired, and they won't just thrive in communities, they get sick and tired. So I hope we all hear what, what this, what this organization is saying, and that it doesn't fall on deaf ears. Duly noted. All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Vice President Lee?
I know you don't represent Ward Two, but Ward Two has the same issues. We're putting in the same work orders over and over and over and over again, and we are waiting on results. And it's, it's gotten to the point where we, as leaders, are frustrated as... And it's, it's gotten to the point where we as leaders are frustrated as well. I just want you to know, we're in the same position, we can only do so much. You know, I can't go out there and lay out the asphalt, but I can put in a thousand work orders. I can call Mister Wright and at twelve o'clock in the morning and then worry him to death. But I just want you to know, we see the same things all across the city, not just in South Jackson, four, four or five.
Right, and I, and I see it is all across the city. People they in charge, you take charge.
That's right.
We don't wanna hear no speech, I'm tired of this stuff. And I, I don't wanna come to meeting for you to look at me, I don't look that well and you don't look that well to me. So I don't have time for that. I wanna see some results. Mayor office, get some results done or Ashean gonna take some results ourself. I wanna hear, did you wanna say something?
Just wanted to, um, add to all of what Mister Ward has said. In regards to our wards of South Jackson, you know, South Jackson, you say South Jackson, it's South Jackson. However, we can ride through other neighborhoods. And we literally see a difference, distinct difference. And one of the directions in which you go and you see a distinct difference, it's where the mayor lives. Okay, say what you like, mayor, don't like, whatever, but it's a distinct difference. And we just want the same thing in South Jackson and even your Jackson, your part of Jackson as well. Because the quality of life has deteriorated tremendously. And we need you to step up. If it means hiring supernumeraries during a period of time that will get the work done that you need. Because often we hear that we don't have enough staff, we don't have what we need. That's an excuse. This city can redirect funds anytime and any day and any hour that they so desire. What I'm asking for, what we're asking for is to get in there and do those things that need to improve the city of Jackson. Period. And it's by any means, as Malcolm would have said, necessary. Thank you.
I want to, uh, make a last comment. If we start looking at, we got one body, church folk, many minimums. If we start looking at East Jackson, South Jackson, West Jackson, look at Hines County. Now what? Eastover half, Afondra half, if they got too much of it, spread it to the other part of the city that don't have. Anybody know this, if you break your leg or break your arm, your body tend to adjust. For what the other problem have. One body, many minimums, but we all Hines County. If we start saying I'm doing whatever, I need to do on my part and look at the city as a whole. You got ten thousand dollars, you don't need but five? Get the other person that need, need the rest of it. Come making sense. This conversation is one to one is two. I don't have to go in no thousand, the numbers go up, highest numbers go up to ten and then start all over again. One to one is two. You got three dollars, you spend four, you broke. What's wrong with us? All the doctor degrees that we have, all the master degree, what's wrong with us? Black folk. We got more education we ever have and can't get nothing done. What's wrong with us? Charles Evans said, black folk, we in charge now. Why black folks being charged that the city go down? Why black folks move in neighborhoods, good neighborhoods and go down? It's, it's something that we don't have no sense or something? It's not that. It's a mind thing. I came from, from a family of fifteen, eleven sisters. We didn't have nothing. But I knew when I left, I want something. And I worked hard for it. I never thought I was be up here or doing what I'm doing right now, but that's not my life being directed, free. All what we doing is free. Some of y'all, you all get paid and doing nothing, making high salary, doing nothing. Some of you all, you live in the city. But they'll tell you how to. Deal with your city. We got a problem with that. You cannot understand my problem unless you live it. Or you in it. Some of y'all live in gated community. Some of you all don't hear gun fire. Can't sleep at night. But you come, wanna leave a group of people, they struggling with that. If you want to leave a group of people, you gotta get down to the nitty gritty, knock on those doors. One on one and talk with them, talk to the people. See what their problem is. Not your problem, they problem, that's why we hired you. But I'll tell you right now. It don't get no happening, this not a threat or nothing. We gotta get it done. Our city, we got to move back up. And we gonna do with everything we need to do to make it happen. Not doing your job, I only you have to say it, when I don't do my job, what they do? Okay, I don't have to say.
All right, uh. Any, any, any comments? All right, just go ahead, Councilor.
Just wanted to thank you for being here and speaking truth to power. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And here's the thing. My ward, we have priorities. The priorities are not the, uh, uh, fuzzy stuff. The priorities are the hard stuff, the peak that folks move out. It's the abandoned properties, it's the trash and open dumping, it's the gunshots at night, it's the potholes. That last thread, these are the priorities and we got to get this city focused on priorities. We gotta turn it around. If not, we gonna keep having folks to leave. This morning, someone in South Jackson cornered me, a friend of mine, and said, hey. Uh, I had called you earlier about some, uh, uh, properties abandoned. But now the same horde of people have skipped over to the next street and it's going and, 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 and going through the houses there. We are losing our city if we don't focus on the priority and the priorities are not here. It's out there in the public, it's out there in South Jackson, and you see it because you're in the neighborhood. I see it because I live off Lynn Street.
And, 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 uh.
I just wanted to know, know, speak, just thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem, no problem at all, let's, let's get it done, uh, we don't, we gonna find somebody as well.
All right, thank you so much, uh, that concludes, yes, I'm sorry, Doctor Omar.
I'd just like to say thank you to the group for bringing their concerns. And when we get whatever it is that they passed out, it wasn't given to me, we will be happy to respond.
I want to make sure you get one and because we do not. Want the mayor, the minister.
I'm sure the clerk's office will do their job and give me what I.
That's all we want, that's all we want to do their job. And if we get that done, we be in a better place and, uh, we gotta make it happen. Thank you, Omar.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are down to consent agenda. Clerk.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Some of.
Second, it's been moving property second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Uh, colleagues, next we have introduction of ordinance, uh. Okay.
Ordinance accepting the village at Livingston Place, phase one, and authorizing the mayor to sign the final plat.
All right, Attorney Williamson.
Um, yes, this is on the agenda for, um, introduction, um, if, uh.
I was gonna recommend.
We go ahead and, uh, run it today.
Oh, no, oh, no, oh, no, oh, no. They're telling now.
This is the, uh, development of Livingston Place that came before us. Maybe four years ago.
Yes.
Um, and, um, I think there was a news story about it not long ago, uh, but it, what, it's a housing development.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, those people just left speaking about how we need to listen to the community. Uh, those old people live behind here, I know people making money, ain't nothing wrong with that. We trying to keep these old people out of these hospitals and nursing homes. These old people deserve to have quiet enjoyment. You gonna put that many houses under some older people, some in their eighties and nineties? We have a little economic development in Ward three, we got all of the automobiles that's been shipped into this area, over across from there. How many cars gonna be stolen? How many people gonna then lose their jobs? We trying to save the Mellicomall, we don't want the Mellicomall to be like the metro center. You know, everybody talking about they want a house, hell, if it's so good, building next to you. You know, don't just come into my ward and then want to kill them, we fighting every day. They just had what, thirteen year old, fourteen doing drive by shootings? Now you gonna put that many people under some old people? No public hearings? Somebody got to care about somebody. Nobody even been over there talk to those people. Who you gonna say we gonna put this many houses under you without these people? They be Reverend Wick's mama like a dog, she never recovered. Can't mix this kind of stuff like that on these senior citizen, they bought their house, they worked. Now they owe you trying to make them go to a nursing home? Force them to the cemetery? No, I ain't for that.
All right, uh, all right, so a, a, apparently if, if we were to suspend the rules to do this. Um, Councilman Stokes, this is your ward, um.
I vote to kill it.
So, I, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Back on next time.
Yeah, it.
No, no, we gonna have some hearings.
Yeah, it, yeah.
People hear something or talk, have you been out there and even talked to the citizens?
You talking to Mister Williamson?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, he, he the one pushing it.
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Stokes, there, there was a, I do remember the meeting that, uh, we had, um. I think there, there are two developments, one that is being done by the church. Uh.
The church has not done anything with their property, they own, that's Cade Chapel.
Cade Chapel.
They own property, they have not done anything.
Okay, and then, and then this is the other development, I believe that when this came before zoning, uh, there was a public hearing and George Jackson, David Archie and them came. Uh, and said some things on record and I think it passed. But I think, uh, the only reason Mister Williamson was recommending bring it up for adoption because of how long it's been. But, uh, we will allow this to just go through its normal process. If there's the need to do, uh, public hearings and if any of the developers are here are. You're, you want, okay, then I would, I would encourage you to get with, um, you know, Councilman Stokes and the community. Uh. Uh, well, no, we, we can't do it now because it's just up for introduction, all right? And you would have to have signed up for public comments if you wanted to, to address this issue. But I'm sure there's going to be. An opportunity avenue for public hearings, Councilman Stokes.
Yes, sir, we, we'll have some meetings. You know, those neighbors over there, and I heard from attorney, trying to represent, I talk to those people. These are older people, these are great grandmamas. These older people don't want this. People gonna be coming across the creek, breaking in their homes. You just imagine middle of the night, somebody in your house who's not invited, that'll almost give you a heart attack. Somebody got to be concerned about these older people in this city who pay for this city. And I can understand this them trying to make money and it might be good, but if it's so good, put it next to his house. I bet he ain't gonna do that. Put it next to his house.
All right.
And see could he live with it?
All right, so, Ca- Councilman Stokes, um, um, we'll let this go through the normal procedure. Uh, and hopefully there'll be some time to, um, do public hearing and to make sure that the community have those conversations that necessary. Uh, this is from my understanding, just wanna be clear, the approval of a plat. Um, for the, for the housing development. And I, I, I do think it is important that the community knows and has opportunity to see what's going, what's being placed there. So, um, Ms. Johnson, you, you, you trying to say something? Oh, okay, I just heard you, all right. So this will roll over to the normal process, uh, item twelve.
Ordinance of the city council of Jackson, Mississippi, requiring security personnel at businesses associated with violence during hours of operation.
All right, Councilman Stokes, this is introduction of your item.
Thank you, Mister President, uh, Mister President. Too many locations in this city. Uh, just places where people get robbed, shot, hurt and killed. And it's sometimes, most times, it's the same locations. Some of the community people came to me about the Texaco on Mega Elvis and Sunset. One kid a couple of years ago just graduated, graduated from high school was killed. Two weeks ago, another girl shot, no security. They make excuses, well, we don't make enough money. They make enough money do anything they want to do. But make sure that these citizens are safe when they go into their establishments. We need to make sure that if your business has a history of violence. That you must have security there during your hours of operation. Stop taking human lives and playing with them because these families never mean. The young man that was killed on North Side Drive, the grandmother called me, she still crying. He was a good boy, left the car running to go get some breath to come it back out and never made it back out the store. Was killed in the store with the car still running. We got to protect the citizens of this city. You deserve to go to a store and get gasoline or Coca-Cola without receiving the death penalty? These please, these places must be safe and it's up to this city to make sure we tell these business people, either you make them safe or you not in business no more. Thank you.
All right, Miss, Mister President, I mean, uh, Mister Stokes. Mister Stokes, uh. And, and I, I wanna just discuss this a tidbit because Councilwoman Lee's ordinance kind of mirrors the same thing. Yours deal more so with surveillance. Um, and yours deals with security and I think the pushback that we have had legally, uh, is that. There, what's being said is that we can't require the business to do something. I think that if that is going to be. Yeah, if that's going to be a legal issue, I think that we may have to look at establishing safe zone service stations and really marketing. And advertising and let the people know that these are safe zones. Or this is a s- service station that, that's abiding by our ordinances and rules. And, and those that are not, then, you know, skip over them and hopefully they go somewhere else. Um, and if they can't bring it to compliance, so I, I wanna apply this because this is not your first time introducing, uh, ordinance on this. So, but I, I think that to keep, because the last time I think that it went into court, we weren't successful. And so, because of the making it mandatory part. But I think that we can find a way to work around it by establishing, saying that this Texaco is safe zoned, is in compliant and posted and put it everywhere we can. And then those other service stations that refuse to come into compliant, it, it, it's known and is out there.
Well, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Our legal department feel that, uh, this is too heavy for them to carry. Then we need to get outside legal people. People deserve to be safe. I, I'm talking about, when you go to a restaurant, you don't go to the restaurant saying that I'm gonna take my family, feed them, but somebody finna get killed. These stations have a history. Of killing, shooting, robberies. And the citizens saying, they wouldn't do that in Madison Rankin County. Why we letting it happen in Jackson? And we all understand legalistically equal protection.
Right.
If they can make sure that their citizens in Madison Rankin County are safe, we can make sure our citizens are safe in Jackson. If that mean we go to court, let's go to court. But somebody gonna recognize, it's gonna show a history when you go to court. Uh, how many people been shot, how many people been killed, and then they still there. And somebody who might not know, take their baby to get some candy. No security. They already got people on the outside hustling.
Yes, sir.
We got to, if if the court system strike it down, them strike it down. We'll try to modify it. But we got to make sure we send the message in this city that when you go to the store, you gonna go home with your candy, whatever else without being robbed, shot, cut or hurt. And if these business people don't want to respect that, let them go to another city and do business, not here.
All right. Thank you. Uh, just one, is the city attorney's office have anything that? Go ahead.
Yes, President Banks, this is City Attorney Drew Martin. So we'll we'll put together a memorandum of the relevant law. And I've looked, Councilman Stokes concerns are all very real and very important. But I don't think we're gonna be able to find any jurisdiction that has upheld an ordinance that would require local businesses to hire security. And our state legislature has heard us a little bit with this recently and has disincentivized some of these businesses from hiring security. But I don't think that an ordinance will ultimately be successful. I'm pretty confident that an ordinance will not be successful if it requires a local business to hire anybody, much less security, including security.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martin, we we trust your opinion and you can talk to us at any time. But you don't need to put nothing in writing because we know how that work. You put it in writing, it's gonna be subpoenaed. And then they gonna come and say, well, your legal department put this in writing. We don't need nothing in writing. You can talk to me and members of this council. And then if you feel that you cannot defend it, surely you know lawyers all over this country who can. But we deserve to be safe. And that's what it's about, safety. That's what they just left out here talking about. They don't want their children hurt, their neighborhood destroyed. That Texaco would have been closed, it was in Eastover a long time ago. They started killing and shooting every month, every other month. Somebody hurt, man, you can't live like this in a civilized society.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I I think this is a valuable conversation and Stokes, Councilman Stokes, we'll let this roll over to to the next process. The city attorney's office will get us the information needed. I do think that, you know, I don't want to see nothing like this fall dead. I would like to make sure that we, because I understand there's some challenges even with 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 the previous one with the surveillance. I think we have to make sure that that we can get this done to accomplish the necessary goals. So, Councilman Stokes, we will roll this over.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
You know, when it come to Jackson, it's like we got different rules. We can't do state law, federal law. But all these other cities do what they want to do. And their people say that people. I had a lady show me a ticket that she received in Pearl that they took it with a camera. But they tell Jackson you can't use cameras, but Pearl can. So that's what I'm saying about equal protection. The rules for Pearl supposed to apply for Jackson. And if they can't do it in Jackson, they can't do it in Pearl. Now, the same thing Councilmember Lee is saying about cameras, they doing it all over the state Mississippi. Then why we can't do it in Jackson? We can't sit back and lie down, let them roll over us. We got to let them challenge us, and we challenge them, that's gonna call a law. Because people know it's right that we protect these citizens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Duly noted. Councilman Hartley.
Yes, and this is, I'd like to see Attorney Martin that we listen to the people and their priorities when it when it's regarding their their safety. And we make it a priority. You know, we've been working on this camera ordinance for a long time. I haven't heard anything of where the progress is. These things are life and death situations that should be a priority for our citizens. And therefore, I would hope that the city's attorney office could elevate these things to a position of importance. And that's all I'm asking. We don't, I haven't heard anything about the camera ordinance. I haven't, there hadn't been anything before. I don't know if there's even been a meeting, I think it was put in committee. But these things need to be elevated. And I, and that's all I ask that when it comes to the things affecting folks livelihood, when it comes to folks that people are clearly asking for, then let's find a way to work it out and quickly. We we don't have time on our side anymore. So please, please elevate our priorities concerning crime. Thank you.
All right, Vice President Lee.
Drew, I'm just wondering why, and I'm kind of piggybacking off of what my colleague is saying because we we followed the same ordinance that Gluckstat has for these cameras. So why is Jackson not able to push this through? And if it's something that I need to merge with Councilman Stokes's ordinance for security, we don't mind doing that as well. But we need to do everything we can to make sure Jackson is safe, even especially at our convenience stores and gas stations where we're stopping with our kids and we're at our most vulnerable positions, trying to get gas or something to drink or something to eat. So please do everything you can. If it can pass in Gluckstat, it should be able to pass in Jackson.
Sure, Council members, I will address that this way. So we we are elevating in our office those issues and recognize the importance of the crime and safety issues that the city council is trying to address. Councilwoman Lee, to your specific question, the Gluckstat ordinance does not give their police real time access. And so there's some constitutional issues there in terms of what can be observed and seen at all times and what can't. And that's what we're trying to work through with our ordinance to make sure that we can thread that needle. On security officers, if somebody can find an ordinance that has withheld a court challenge that requires local businesses to hire security officers, then by all means, I want to see it and I'll be looking for it myself. I think what we're gonna find is a number of places that have attempted that and and none have been successful. But 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 but, that said, we're gonna look hard and and if we can't make that work, then I think some of the things that President Banks just mentioned are ways to go. There's some ways to incentivize some of these activities and and conduct that I think can still aid in public safety.
Thank you, Drew. As you know, our jurisdiction is a lot bigger than Gluckstats. And we have a shortage of officers. So this is a way for us to have eyes on the street at all times. So our situation is a little unique versus Gluckstat, which seems like in order to make us more whole and safe, this is what is needed. So please do everything you can.
Sure, we are. And and to be more specific on that blue light ordinance, I think each of you received a letter recently from a law organization that raised some questions. We're trying to answer those questions. But in particular, they pointed us to some jurisdictions in Georgia that attempted similar ordinances, got challenges and made some fairly minor tweaks that everyone agreed were acceptable and have been have continued to be enforced. So we're trying to model ours after that because we think that'll be a safer legal challenge.
Mr. President? Yeah, hold on right before you, Mr. Martin, if you could look Georgia Union City College Park, there's a quota, I believe, they have if a certain business had had so many incidents, then if there there was like a cap and if it said that basically they had so many incidents, then they would be required by their ordinance to do this because of the amount. And so it was based on the amount of incidents. But if you could look at those, I I think that was a way to deal with it. Instead of it just making a requirement across the board, then what it is, if this service station A had forty incidents within two months, then our city ordinance can kick in and then, and that way you're not, it's just not required for everybody. It's based on that. And I think that's the work that we have to do in looking at this. Mr. Stokes, you had something?
Thank you. Drew, we can't be afraid to test the waters, to protect these citizens. If, and and I I know you're saying we're prepared to go to the Supreme Court, someone gonna dissent. And from their dissent, we are finding a roadmap that need to be put in place, making an adjustment that we can protect these citizens. But we must have the ordinance approved for someone to challenge. If they challenge, then that's gonna lead us to a path where we can create a win-win. A path where we would know where the court system would look for. But to allow nothing to be challenged, to do absolutely nothing, the people dying. And we just say, well, just another dead Negro. That's got to end. Thank you.
I hear you, Councilman, thank you.
All right, was there was there any other comments?
Yeah, I just I just wanted to say, just a a challenge to Mr. Martin. Look, if if there is some organization out there that's opposing this, then what is their remedy? What is that issue that we can work around them? And again, I I think we need to do all we can, hey, look, explain to them that there are people walking in the stations now and 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 getting hurt, if not killed. Explain to them that, hey, look, we're looking for remedies and we need remedies right now. So I understand they're out there and they're upholding rights. But we have to be willing to work to get something resolved here. You know, we had gentleman this morning that talked about some folks are getting paid a lot of money to do their job. Well, the people are asking for something to happen here. And again, right now, and and look, I don't want to, I don't want to be too dramatic here, but there may be a case next week or the week after where someone gets hurt. And we, if we just ask ourselves, have we done everything possible to prevent it? Please elevate this to a higher level. Please think outside of the box. Please court call these agencies up, do all that you can, it's that important. It may not be important in certain parts of the city. But where Mr. Councilman Stokes and I live, it's definitely important. I got one station that was considered a death trap. Now, I understand JPD is doing a lot of stuff, but it's not getting better. You know, we have to, we have to continue to move forward on this and I appreciate everything you're doing. Please use this, push, elevate this situation, please.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. That concludes introduced, both of those will roll over through the normal procedure. All right, Clanks?
Order proven claims appearing at pages one oh three to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of four million fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-seven cents for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
All right, so moving properly second on this item. Mr. Melanbeck, if you go over the hot points?
Yes, good morning, Fidelis Malanbecker, CFO. These are the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. First is MV Contract Transportation Incorporated in the amount of four hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents paid out of Fund One Eighty Seven Transportation. This is for the March twenty twenty-four fixed route services. Second is MV Contract Transportation Incorporated in the amount of four hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty cents paid out of Fund One Eighty Seven Transportation. This is for the April twenty twenty-four fixed route services. Third is Dickerson and Bowen in the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand seventy-eight dollars and twenty cents paid out of Fund One Seventy Three Infrastructure Tax. This is for the Street Resurfacing Project Phase One A. And the fourth is People's Bank in the amount of three hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and forty cents paid out of Fund Two Sixty Three, this twenty eighteen TIF bond Eastover. And this is for the twenty eighteen TIF July twenty twenty-four payment. And that concludes the report for the four largest claims.
All right, yes, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Melanbeck, on these two, first two items are for the MV Contract Transport. The, which brings to mind the the challenges we had with potential strike and the whatever it was, the sick out, whatever we had with JTRAN. What is the status of that relationship between J, between the contractor and the labor people at this point in time?
Yeah, so the administration has had two meetings, one with the union representation and the second. Yes, so the administration.
Ms. Welch, if you could mute until Mr. Melanbeck finishes and then I'll allow you.
And their second meeting was with the management group, MV Contract Transportation. From those meetings, the mayor had asked for the two groups to come together. And so that meeting has been scheduled. Not exactly sure what date, I think it might be next week or week after next? Be scheduled.
Fourth, July third, but we're trying to get it moved up because of the other issues.
Right, okay.
All right, Ms. Ms. Welch, did you have something?
No, sir, I just was waiting to see if there was a question I need to answer.
Okay, any any other questions, comments, colleagues? Yes, Councilman Stokes, hit your butt.
Doctor, we behind on any payments, any vendors, anything currently?
Yeah, so Councilman Stokes, and and the work that has been happening, what we'll do is we'll be sharing some slides with you to show you all the progress that we've made in terms of the outstanding invoices that we've been working through. And I can share, for instance, Public Works, which was the most challenging department. We went from outstanding invoices of approximately seven point two million dollars to now just a little over two hundred thousand. There there has been significant progress made, you know, throughout the various departments. With respect to your your question, are we behind? We do have a template that shows invoices that are older than thirty days, although statute is forty-five days. But then when we track it, it's at thirty days, we look at sixty days, ninety days and and plus. And so we've been tracking all these invoices, working very closely with all the departments.
Doc, when Deion Sanders was here, the issue came up about the football field. And I'm bringing it back because we need someone to do the right thing, so to speak. Many years ago, JTRAN was located on Terry Road. They were gonna move and they did move to Highway Eighty. The city sold JTRAN old facility to Jackson State. Jackson State allowed the city to stay there until they finished the new JTRAN location. It was held up because they used, I think, foreign supplies to build it. And because you have federal money, you had to have American supplies. The point I'm trying to make is that during Deion's time, they took the position that the city still owned that property, which we do not. Can we find the right paperwork and formally transfer this property to Jackson State? Because it's theirs, they paid us for it. It's not like we donated to them. They paid us and everything else. Now, I don't know how long it be left here, but many people still alive who was on the council, I think the man and everything, who can verify what I'm saying. I don't think we need to shortchange Jackson State by holding on to property that they legally bought from us.
Yeah, Councilman Stokes, if I'm not mistaken, about either three or four years ago, because you brought that up, we took that up, I think we did do that. I can't remember the attorney. It 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 came up because we were talking about transferring the ownership back to Jackson State.
Yes.
And it was part to him doing the expansion of that practice field. I'm I'm trying to remember. Councilwoman Lindsay, do you?
I vaguely remember that, Mr. Banks, but I do, I do recall that we had this conversation before.
We did have this, can someone in legal look that, it it was a title deal. Do you remember, Dr. Martin?
I do remember the conversation, I don't remember. I don't remember the outcome. Angela, can you check and see what's in the minutes about this?
Okay. All right. All right. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Vice President Lee?
Um, Mr. Mallenbecker, can you send the council a memo about, um, how much we've spent in late fees and any type of fees for not paying our bills on time? I just want to know how much money we've lost, um, for the past four to five years, um, in late fees.
Sure. We'll, we'll, we'll look through, uh, the records.
Councilman Harley?
Yeah. Mr. Mallenbecker, um, just, uh, I know we approved, uh, those positions for finance. You have a complete reorganization.
Right.
And, and now you're in the implementation stage of it. Okay? Um, and I, you know, we all have feelers a, a, all across the city. Uh, some of the folks calling me are concerned that everything is, the information and training is not getting out to explain the entire program. So if you would, just make a note of that. Just make sure that everyone along that flow chart, personnel chart, is educated on what is happening.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments on claims? All right. All in favor of claims? Oppose? All right. Item carries five, two. Uh, payroll?
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction, claims number three zero three, seven, seven, two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So, second. It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Uh, item fifteen?
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Jai Keaton as director of the Department of Planning and Development, City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So move.
Second. It's been moving property second on this item. Uh, Dr. Mar?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, but I'd like to take a liberty at this point, uh, President Banks, and I'd not like to acknowledge the three, uh, mayor's summer youth workers who are here today. Um, Chloe Mays, who is a twenty twenty-four graduate.
Stand up.
Stand up. A twenty twenty-four graduate of Murrah High School.
All right.
Bella Walker, a twenty twenty-four graduate of Germantown High School, and Nia Peoples, who is a senior at Forest Hill.
Hey!
And so we want to take advantage of having these young people here to observe government in action and let them know that we appreciate the work that they're doing in human and cultural services and hope you'll consider the city as a career opportunity. Okay. And now to, to, uh, Jai, uh, Mr. Keaton. Uh, it gives me great pleasure to put Mr. Keaton forth for confirmation as director of our planning and econ, Department of Planning and Economic Development. Uh, Mr. Keaton has been with the city, um, started in twenty twenty, so I guess I've known him, uh, that long. Uh, left us in search of greener pastures and he found out they weren't that green and he came, but he gained a lot of skills and came back to us with those skills, uh, from, uh, MDA. Um, he's done some great work since stepping in after, uh, as an interim director and has really brought a lot of energy to, uh, the department. He has, um, the support of the department members as well as the administration, and we are proud to put him forth for confirmation. And you have his updated resume in front of you.
So you're not gonna say, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jai Keaton, hand the mic to him?
He has the mic, but, uh, uh, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jai Ke.
All right.
Uh, well, I, I first like to thank, um, the body, um, that's the council, the mayor, Dr. Mar, for their consideration and my team, uh, for being here, supporting me. Uh, it's been a very interesting journey working here at the City of Jackson, and, um, it's a privilege to work here and serve the people. Um, to Dr. Mar's point, um, I did leave the city, not really necessarily wanted to, but felt that that was the best need for me at that time. And during that period of time, working at the state, you know, s, you know, at the top of, uh, the Wolf Oak Building, looking down at the City of Jackson, I really just felt a strong passion that I, I, I have a duty to serve my people. So that's why I chose to come back. Um, I take this job very seriously. I, I, I have fun. I know I look like I have fun because it is fun. Um, but the reality is, this is, you know, my purpose in life is to serve the people. That's why I got introduced to economic development. Um, that's why I prepared myself to come back to the City of Jackson and do just that. So, um, it's, it's a great opportunity. I appreciate it and I look forward to leading the people. Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, I think we're all familiar with, uh, Jai. I don't see the need to go, to do two rounds of questioning unless there's an objection to, to go to that procedure. Uh, if there's not any objection, uh, are there any questions or comments at this time?
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Harley?
Yes, uh, I know as a, a planning director has some, a lot of challenges. Uh, and, um, and, uh, my ward alone, we got tremendous amount of challenges. First of all, I believe your code enforcement section is doing a, is doing a great job of the initial, uh, preparation, going out, investigating, and, you know, we're calling that three one one line all the time to report them. Uh, and I see here we have at least, uh, uh, at least twenty-five, uh, properties that have been, uh, proven to be health hazards and menace, uh, to our communities. Uh, and on item number six, one of the difficulties, though, is making sure we always have funding. So what are your plans for getting, gathering funding to make sure we have these vacant lots cleaned up and the, uh, uh, the properties torn down that are menacing our communities?
Well, um, the, the primary thing is, of course, making sure we do the best we can with the, the funding we get from the general fund, right? Um, on top of that, being creative with what we can do with CDBG funds. We've seen some of that money be activated, uh, this year or recently. Um, I respect what, uh, Representative Ronna Kruber has done with, um, identifying or appropriating two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, be it just for his district respect, but maybe we could put in a little bit more work with other representatives to see if they can model his actions. And the, the last thing, we'll be trying to get federal support. Um, we've been blessed enough to get federal support, uh, in the last year or so. So, um, using our federal lobbyist, Ice Miller, if we gotta go camp out at Department of Treasury or camp out at, at HUD to see if they will be more supportive of, of using some of their discretionary funds to support our projects, I'd be more than willing to do that.
I appreciate that, sir. And I, I think we discussed previously, I'm ready for a trip to Washington. We need to go, uh, Mr. Thompson's office, Congressman Thompson's office. We need to go talk to Secretary Fudge. There's money there. We need to get it and we need to get a lot of it. Uh, and we need to clean up. So again, I, I, I appreciate a lot of what's been going on for us going out, doing inspections. Some of these properties have been around for years and have not been, uh, torn down and have been public health hazards. So if you're willing, uh, and, uh, you know, if you confirm today, uh, you know, we can start making that plan. I don't know, Councilman Foot has introduced a resolution today as well, calling for a task force just for that. Is that important to our citizens? So, um, I'd say, uh, you know, if confirmation today, let's pack our bags, let's go find that money so we can clean up.
I agree with you, Councilman Harley. Thank you.
Yes. Councilman Stokes?
I've had calls that, that support you, uh, being the director. And we had a conversation about Jimmy Hyder. And my position was Jimmy Hyder brought off his depot on Industrial Drive. And now it's gone. The Hearst Group, which owns fifty percent of downtown. And they slowly leaving. I don't want to criticize anyone who's been in your position, and I know it's been a hard job. They have to deal with abandoned hotels and they have taken over positions like law enforcement. They have done so many things and gentleman told me that you were MDA, Municipal Development Authority. My concern is that if we do not turn the corner in development in Jackson, we can kiss the baby. All the money that's coming through Amazon and everybody else, everywhere you go, they building. It's developing a little good, except in Jackson. We used to be the leader. And I understand excuses people make and this and that and, but it makes no sense that in Jackson, especially downtown and around town, very few cranes. You go another city, cranes everywhere. They building all over the world, all over the country. And we paid Jimmy Hyder a lot of money. I think I voted against him because of that, but he told him to bring y'all businesses and he did. We need someone. And it's, and I'm not gonna say it, I shouldn't say it, but I thought we needed a white to be in this position to bring in some money people. And I might be wrong, little brother. Please forgive me if I'm wrong. Respect. You cannot lose Trustmark Bank. Like we doing. They had a office in downtown. It's gone. It's gone. I think in the new building. We got to bring people in who's gonna help us develop. We not moving forward. And if we don't move forward, we gonna move backwards. Maybe you the one who can make us move forward? I don't know. But what I do know is this. There's no way that Jackson supposed to let a Richland, a Madison, or Pearl outdo us. I've been here long enough where those were considered towns. And the city was Jackson. And we led this area. We led this state. Now they consider us a town, even though we have all the population. I'm saying that because you got a big job if you get confirmed. But you got to deal with economic development, bro. We got the bills. We got to create jobs. We got to bring in businesses. We got to have some economic development. Our people can't keep going into Rankin and Madison County to work like they're doing. They getting tickets because they drive a, a Humvee or something. So my position is this, little brother. The people who called me said you could do it. I pray about it when it's time to vote. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Lee, then Councilman Foot, then Councilwoman Lindsay.
Um, Jai, when you were deputy director for economic development, we did a couple of studies to look at economic development in the Highway eighteen, eighty corridor. Um, whatever happened with that study?
So you're talking about the retail recruiters? So the retail, I mean, you know, we just did it for one year. So during that year, they ran, they completed analysis to help us understand our leakage, basically what business is leaving out, um, what citizen, where citizens are going to purchase things, which, which would have helped us determine what, um, products or what businesses we could be better, best positioned to recruit. Um, we did not get to the recruitment element of that because the contract was canceled. Um, however, we do have the data to determine, um, what is the, 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 the market position or market value of the City of Jackson, Highway Eighty and Canaline Road included. So that's pretty much what we did was an analysis. We didn't get a chance to get to the point in which we could have started recruiting. The other thing that was important about that contract or that engagement was being able to have access to the relationships with the retailers, um, the site selectors, so that when I get calls from certain council people asking why our business is leaving, what are the reasons for them leaving? What can we do better? Those retail recruitment relationships were a fiduciary or was a conduit, um, to those, to those businesses. So, um, we didn't, I did, you know, the, the, the task was not fulfilled, but, um, we do have that data.
Is it our, our part?
Yeah. Councilor, yes. Yeah. It was a, would have been a three-year engagement, but we only got past year one.
Okay. So we wasted that money.
It was my decision.
The, as far as my industrial park area, I've had the same issues for the past four years. Can you please help me decide what we can do to help remedy some of those situations? I'm sure you're quite aware of them. I'd just like to hear your suggestions.
Well, yeah. So that's the main thing I'm pushing to, 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 um, Councilman Stokes's point about pushing economic development. Again, I want to clarify, I am an economic developer more than I am a planner. And I think that this presents a good opportunity for the City of Jackson because we've always had planners. No disrespect to them. They did a good job at improving processes and getting us on board with, you know, modern technology. Uh, I respect that. But what I'm telling my team now is now it's time to continue to improve internal controls, but also position the City of Jackson to do better business, to do better business, to do business, period. And I think that having those relationships and having that approach to businesses, um, and making yourself available to the business community, um, is the number one thing that we could do. So I said that to say that when I first got to the City of Jackson, e, in economic development, industrial development is pretty much economic development. So I always talk about the industrial parks and even though we have a relationship with Heinz County Economic Development, who kind of leads the effort for, uh, that, you know, for the industrial parks, the city can play a role in improving the sites. That is the name of the game. So when you talk about Amazon, you talk about Nissan, you talk about Continental Tire, you, you're really having a conversation about site development. It's not sexy, it's not jazzy. It take a lot of money and it take a long time. But the reality is that's what sites are looking for. I mean, I'm sorry, that's what companies are looking for. They're looking for what, where are the shovel-ready sites? Is the infrastructure in the ground? Are the roads paved? Are the roads wider enough for eighteen-wheeler traffic? Um, that's what we have to work on. I think that we could do a better job with supporting Heinz County Economic Development, um, in improving the industrial parks to be best positioned to recruit industry.
Well, I've seen a significant lag in my industrial park. I lost Coca-Cola, which is a big industry in my ward. And so, you know, that is one of my main priorities is trying to retain and recruit, uh, businesses to that area, but I haven't seen any improvements. You know what we have with Hill to Drive and I know it's not in the planning department, but we have a lot of significant issues that I need to make sure are addressed in order to retain those businesses. Um, also, um, when Chloe was the director, we were able to get a lot of our dilapidated buildings down. Um, I just want to know what your plan is for that, um, such as things like the Oyo Hotel. I have a Studio Eight that's right next to my Amazon distribution center that's just sitting there. I'm wondering what's happening with that. I want to make sure, uh, my Chili's stays in business there. I've talked to you about that. I want to make sure that, I know that Red Lobster filed for bankruptcy, um, help. Uh, I want to make sure if they, if they do leave, I want to know about it. I want to know when businesses are leaving my ward before they're even thinking about leaving, um, so that we can do everything we can to try to keep them there. And I want to make sure Target is secure in my ward because that's a big anchor for my ward. So I have a lot of issues with, um, solicitors and beggars and homeless people, um, around that area. And I think that's going to deter a lot of people from coming over and shopping. So I have a lot of issues that I want to make sure are taken care of and maintained.
So, yeah. I was, I was gonna say, the team is motivated. I mean, our code enforcement team, outside of myself, I think sometimes as directors and deputy directors, we get a little bit too much credit for all the work. But our code enforcement team are really keen on these properties. And what I'm telling you is we do need to improve our processes. Um, we need to be more efficient with the processes. If it, if it takes three weeks or a month, let's see if we can measure it and see if we can't take two weeks, right? Or one week to get something done, right? So we are definitely having those conversations, but nothing is going to stop our change because the, the code enforcement team played a vital role in getting those buildings torn down.
All right. Council, I'm Councilman Foot and then Councilwoman Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Keaton, what are your?
Uh, Mr. Keaton, what are your top two priorities for the planning department?
Um, definitely improving our business development department, division. Um, because again, to Councilman Stokes's point, um, I think we got to play ball on both sides of the court. You got offense and you got defense. Defense is us reacting to things. It's us, you know, trying to find money for, for, for demos, it's us trying to figure out how to solve homelessness. Um, offensively, it's us actually being aggressive with creating and developing. So my whole thing is positioning the, the planning department to do, like I said, do better business, be more creative with the, the funding that we have available to us specifically through CDBG. Um, we know that the budget that we have is, is planning heavy. There are no dollars set aside for economic development or business development. So that's one of my top priorities. And the other priority again is to just represent the city in a good way and make us attractive for investment. I think that's, that's what we're missing, we're missing attracting outside capital. And I think that everything we do on the planning side should be to better position us to do business with people that want to do business instead of making it complicated, difficult, hard, or just flat out unattractive. So those are my two top priorities. I would like to see a lot of housing development too, and I'm not talking about affordable housing. Like I respect the fact that when we start talking about the changes of the fabric of the communities, why businesses are leaving, why we see high crime, why the school districts are struggling. This is across the board, across America, is when you see a middle-class move out of a community, you're gonna begin to get regressive neighborhoods. So to me, the key ingredient is attracting a middle-class to the city of Jackson. The number one way you do that is through housing.
You have a follow-up? Oh, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, thank you, and this, this topic has been, um, really hit on by several of my colleagues at this, by this time. But it's always perplexed to me why we have so much blight that seems to go ignored within our business areas. Um, south, the soft boundaries are the front, front door to many of our communities. Um, we have, uh, I've had a reason, I, when I go to see my mother, I'm driving down County Line almost every day. Um, that is one example, Terry Road is another example of, you know, we don't have good bus stops. We have people just standing on the side of the road, we have a tremendous amount of litter, we have abandoned buildings. What can we do, um, or rather, how do you plan to address the blight in the commercial districts to make them more attractive to, um, new development?
So, um, so I think the previous planning director, uh, instated something called target neighborhoods, right? Um, and politically, that's questionable because other neighborhoods seem to feel left out. So the challenge that we have is we don't have enough resource, no complaints. But the fact is, we don't have enough resource, human capital or financial capital, to address all the issues. So I think strategically, it would be beneficial for us to target our more, um, I don't want to say, uh, our economic base, right, areas where our economics kind of are, um, concentrated. I've worked with, um, Keisha Weathers as far as cleaning up the gateways. I mean, we, I enjoy with, the, the team in the city of Jackson don't get enough credit. This is what the public cannot see, the people that work hard behind the doors every day. I enjoy working with the staff. And anytime we come together on projects, everybody supports each other. We did cleanups off of Capers Street, we did cleanups on Highway eighty. Um, that energy is there. So I just think that we just got to do a better job and, and, and move swiftly, I think people move too slow, right? I think the process is moved too slow. Um, so to me, it's just, it's just having, you know, it's motivating people enough to care about what they do every day. It's more than just getting a check. Um, I tell my team all the time, it's the difference in between working in a private industry versus working for government. Private industry, you don't perform, you get fired. In government, it takes forever to fire people, I don't mind firing people. So the reality is, we need to move swiftly and we need to be intentional about what we do. So I, I rather under-promise and over-deliver, I don't have an answer to, there's no easy solution to that question. Very valid question, but I, like I said, we just keep chipping away at it.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Mr. Keaton, um, uh, you, you mentioned several things that caught my attention. One is, uh, the Highway eighty de- development. You said you've done cleanup along Highway eighty. What are your plans on that Highway eighty corridor, especially from, uh, all the way from Gallatin down to, uh, to two twenty?
If I had a million dollars, I'd probably do more than what I can do with what I got. But the reality is, I think that when we talk about Highway eighty and Highway eighteen and South in West Jackson respectfully, I think that it's important to have a conversation with the community to help the community understand its value and its role in creating market value, meaning household incomes, educational attainment, um, uh, uh, what you call discretionary income, that's, those are the data points that businesses look at.
And, 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 and I, and I apologize for interrupting, but I have about two or three small things I want to ask you. So I'm asking your direct plans for Highway eighty, what are you going to do? I had a lady to call me from Pearl, the Pearl, the, the senior center. She was complaining last week, she is the, one of the big project managers over there. As you know, they're open, as you're aware. She's complaining about all along that corridor, their grass and stuff being grown up, okay? And that may not be directly yours, but code enforcement does have a, a place in it. A gentleman this morning talked about ordinances and enforcing the ordinances. And I know code enforcement, again, there's a place to make sure that either the people along that, that line or the city or some kind of effort clean up there. And, and so I ask you, what is your plans, uh, for that Highway eighty? Because I, I directed her to, uh, to Ms. Weathers, to, uh, to planning, code enforcement, and also to the county. But I haven't seen that market change that, uh, that we, uh, you know, that, that I, that I heard you mention. I haven't seen that. It's still a place people drive down and they go, well, I don't know if I want to move my business here. And finally, my other question is, you've been, uh, acting in this position for a minute. What are some of your successes? So if you would, could you address that Highway eighty? The things you've done, the things you're going to do to assure big customers, million-dollar customers like the Pearl, that they don't have to live on this block and still look at all this, uh, uh, violation of ordinance and not being cleaned up? And how do we develop that? And the second thing is, during your time, what are some of your successes as, uh, as a stand-in in this position? Thank you.
So what I would say as for the cleanup is making it known, as I've become aware of, or to be, I, I be on, I, I'm, I'm West Jackson. So I go down Highway eighty fairly regularly. Um, the challenge is, if I'm being truthful, when there is a cleanup, you know, shortly thereafter, it's, you know, like, it's dumping, it happens regularly, I don't have an immediate solution for that. What I can say is, when something is brought to my attention and the resources are made available for me to do that, we act. So that's, we're gonna continue to do that. Um, as far as what my success is in the last, what, two months that I've been in this role? Uh, I created stability in the departments. We got five or six major, pretty much emergency issues with various projects that have come to some level of stabilization. Um, and the morale in the department is good, we ready to rock and roll. So it ain't, you know, I don't, there's no magical formula, um, it's just a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Keaton, my, um, my example of, uh, of a good director is Mr. Lathan, who was under the mayor, yeah, who was under the mayor's daddy. I, I believe that we need to compete with Madison Rankin County. Uh, I didn't know, I don't know whether or not you're ready. But I don't want to be the one who block your progress. But we are getting left behind. From my times in the county, all the development that's happening in Clinton, um, Interstate twenty, the county did it, county paid for everything, they did everything. And I sit there and watch the county and I asked them, why don't you do for Jackson? We got to get someone in there, Mr. Keaton, who can bring the bacon home. Too many bankers that's retiring and everything else. If your budget need to be expanded, expand your budget. But as they say, Stephen Wonder can see, we getting the socks beat out of, all of us, off of us at least. It makes no sense that we're not even in the ballgame anymore. And so many, so much to do. If you feel that tearing down houses, weeds and that, need to go back to public works, then make that suggestion to council members. If you feel that these industrial parks, because I looked at mine, said, I don't know how long it's gonna be in my ward, you know, Office Depot leaving and we just got somebody else, that, that really hurt, you know? And then Coca-Cola, man, somebody should have been there talking to Coca-Cola. Ain't no way you want Coca-Cola to leave Jackson. I, you know, I know it's not your fault, you wasn't there, I know that. But the concern is, can you fight with the big boys? And that's what they have now in Rankin and Madison County, they got big boys that's making things happen.
I was trained by the big boys.
We'll see.
So, 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 Joey, I'm telling you, like, so.
I give you a chance, you say you can do it, you ain't got to complain to me. You say you can do it, well, I think I'd be back here another term, I'm gonna say, you remember you told me? So I, I have no problem, I vote for you. You say you can do it.
You can do it. I under-promise or over-deliver, we just gonna work hard.
Councilman Brazil.
Best for last. Uh, Mr. Keaton, uh, we haven't really known each other long, but I do like the fact that I can call you and you will answer the phone. In my ward, our biggest priority is code enforcement. You know that, our last debate was about code enforcement. Um, interpreting the law, enforcing the law, and just making sure that we're able to clean up these communities. You said a lot of great things today, and I really appreciate the fact that you have your eyes on economic development, that Highway eighteen corridor that has so much untapped potential, the Highway eighty corridor that has a lot of untapped potential. Um, but I do understand that none of this is gonna happen until we get these properties, shovel-ready, what you call it, yeah, shovel-ready. That's getting these dilapidated homes torn down, getting these lots cleared off. The Oyo Hotel, a lot of those properties along Highway eighteen, and actually trying to get, I mean, Highway eighty, and then actually trying to get developers into the area. I do know that you do know how to dance with the bigwigs. I know that you at the forefront of the Topgolf issue. Um, and, and, you know, we know that politics in other counties, other cities snatch it from, from our money. I understand that. And I do have a lot of faith in your capabilities to actually bring companies in. But lean on us to get you what you need. A lot of times, directors don't necessarily just put it out there, okay? If you need a million dollars for, to tear down properties, let us know, you ain't gonna get it. But let us know so we can try to get you as close to that as we possibly can.
Right.
We understand there's a, you know, this is a business and I, you have the, the, the youth, the energy, the wherewithal. And I know for a fact that you have the respect of your departments, I've talked to a lot of people. Two, and, and you've already hit on this, uh, businesses, there's a lot of lag time in terms of getting permits. Uh, I've had people reach out to me, say, hey, and I'm not sure what the system looks like, but they're able to see whose desk is sitting on. And there's a lot of inertia there. And so as you're streamlining these processes, we need to make sure that Jackson is more business-friendly. I understand site plan review is, is, is one of those strongholds. And I really appreciate site plan review because if something's gonna go wrong, it's gonna stop right there. But it shouldn't take weeks, months, or maybe even a year to get a business permit in this city. And so I would really appreciate if you were intentional about breaking up that inertia, making sure that especially small business owners, they're able to get the permits and get to work, you know? So, uh, I'm gonna support you today. And I pray that your, this vote goes through so that you can get back to work. Thank you.
Yes, Vice President Lee.
Uh, Mr. Keaton, under our old planning director, she brought some innovative ideas that, um, generated revenue for the city. Do you have any, um, ideas that you plan to bring forward?
Um, not immediately, I'll get with the team and determine, um, you know, what, what's best for where we at right now. Again, I like to under-promise and over-deliver. Um, a lot of times when we, uh, move quickly with things that it seems as if they make a lot of money, we make a lot of missteps. So I want to take my time, understand the climate, understand the environment, and develop strategy from there.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, I, I look at Richland Mayor, Jean McGee and Mayor Hawkins and Madison and, and, uh, Clinton Mayor, I'm some of the board supervisors with, yeah, Phil Fisher. And, uh, Jackson was, we were beating up on them like they were just a drum. And through their planning and through all the efforts, they changed things. I think your energy is leading me your way, you, you say you can do it. And as I go to my meeting, talk to my people, I'm, I'm gonna say, look, he say he can do it, we got to at least give him a chance. But something must happen with Farris Street. And I know, we don't need to be saying, oh, it's, we gonna deal with, uh, it's another age, it's another thing. It has always been the planning department. I always said, well, we didn't have a planning department. Planning served at the direct pleasure of the mayor. Councilwoman Lee's office was the planning department office. The first person that called himself a planner, that's where his office was located. So I'm saying this, you say you can put us in the ballgame. I'm saying, if you say you can put us in there, I give you a chance, I don't have a problem. But now if you don't put us in the ballgame and we keep getting beat like a drum, I'm gonna say something. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Yes, sir. Just one final comment, uh, if you were here earlier today, Mr. Keaton, you, you heard the folks speak up. And several things that were said. One is, they want the ordinance to be complied with, no excuses. And, and I, I'm going to support you today, I'm like, uh, Councilman Stokes. We're looking for something better, it has to be better. And from my belief, we don't have any money, it's not a good excuse. That doesn't work because there's avenues out there where we can go get money and we have to exhaust all those opportunities of federal money, grants, CDBGs, county, everything. We have to fully evaluate that. So I'm, I, you know, I'm not taking that as the final reason. The people are demanding something happens, they're demanding progress. And so I would say, if you get a, a confirm going into this position, please understand that you have one, one judgment or one vote today, but you got a whole community out there looking at how you do your job. And we just pray for, uh, pray for you in that capacity and pray for our city as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Keaton, uh, there's scripture that says to be swift to listen, but slow to speak. And one of the things I do appreciate about you, uh, and you know how we've talked, uh, we ain't necessarily bumped heads, but we disagree. But in your spirit, I discerned that you were listening, which meant a lot. Even, um, when I sent emails over, you know, the recent one I think I sent out was NLC because, you know, the ordinance that, uh, I authored with the rental registry. Now NLC is endorsing it. Now, NLC is endorsing it and cities are taking it up all over, which helps our legal process with it. And you responded immediately back, said, we already implementing, my, the team is already implementing. And, you know, someone, I, I think the benefit is that it's important to have directors that don't claim or act like they know it all. Right? But have and can exercise the humility to listen, you know, uh, and, and then to see the result. All right, and so I applaud that. And, you know, with where we are, you know, we need to just stabilize a lot in this city.
Absolutely.
All right, and so I, I appreciate the conversations.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, you, 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 you got something else you wanna say?
No, I'm just saying, thank you. I said enough.
All right, it's, it's time to vote. All in favor? All right, congratulations. You improved unanimously. All right. Make sure you answer that phone then. Don't answer that phone. No change. All right. Sixteen.
Order establishing the assessment for the downtown Jackson Business Improvement District.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Abstain, Mr. President.
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right, item carries four, zero, two. Next item.
Order establishing the assessment for the LaFleur East Business Improvement District.
So move.
Second. It's been moving properly second on this. All in favor?
Abstain, Mr. President.
Uh, item carries four with one extension. Next item.
Order establishing the assessment for the Funderen Business Improvement District.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Let, let, let me say this. Uh, first of all, I, I wanna thank, um. You know, as we get into, uh, Funderen and Bellhaven Improvement District, I wanna thank, uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Lindsay. For showing an example and using state legislation in the advantage of our communities. Before I was a council member, when I was a deputy CAO. Uh, I remember meeting, uh, Councilwoman Lindsay, and she was doing this work then. Organizing communities and businesses to begin to take advantage of legislation that gives them the ability to approve. And it's something that can be modeled throughout this city. Because we have, all have communities in our ward that if we took advantage of doing CIDs and our BIDs. Uh, it, it can make things a lot better. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight that. And, and your work, Councilwoman Lindsay. Uh, because before I got on this council, when I was working with this city. You were up here meeting with me a lot then. Go ahead, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Thank you for your kind words, Mr. President. And I, I want to say that, um. I stand ready to help any community throughout the city, um. Accomplish these same, um, uh, taxing districts, special taxing districts. But I really wanna stop, pause, and say thank you to the folks who are getting up every day and making them work. And we have two of them with us today. Mr. Warren Speed with LaFleur and Mr. Dallas Quinn with Downtown Jackson Partners. And on the line, we did have, um. Ms. Mary Alex Thigpen with Bellhaven and Ms. Rebecca Garrison was here this afternoon, I mean, yesterday afternoon. But I just, so the council understands the kinds of things that are being done with these funds. Greater Bellhaven, for example, at least twice has already used their CID funds to clean out storm sewers. They are, they've made improvements too and are shoring up our city parks. So they're putting this money back into the community. And I know downtown Jackson, we don't see litter downtown and we have fresh flowers because they are spending a lot of money every month to make our downtown look better. And so I, I stand ready to help any way I can, Mr. Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you so much. Uh. Mr. Presidents, you know, different people. See and meet and talk to different people throughout this city.
Yes, sir.
And I've tried over the last thirty days to get out a little more. And sometimes people don't know who will come to you and speak to you and talk to you about different things. Things that maybe I don't see in my ward. Or people my ward don't talk to me about. Like the walking trail. You know? But when I stopped at Char. You know? And trying to, to get back out. And the gentleman stopped and just started talking to me about the walking trail. Some of these things, uh. Things in other wards, they need to come into different parts of the city. And talk to people in different parts of the city about. You know, I'm concerned and, and I don't know which plan we going with. With the city new ward lines, but if I stayed round Chastain. I'm concerned about the home, it's just too many homeless people there. It, it's entirely too many. We, we got to do something. And we gotta do something quickly, cause it's destroying. That end of Jackson. My mother taught at Chastain almost twenty-some years. And I know how little used to look. I go get a milkshake on High Street. Homeless people coming to people's cars at eleven and twelve o'clock at night. Arguing with people.
You getting a milkshake at eleven o'clock at night?
Oh, yeah. I'm fat. Fat a little bit. But they, how can you come to somebody's car arguing with people because they won't give you money? These are not mental people. They just going under there. Under the belief that they can get over by saying they're mental. We got to do something. In this city, if there's these. Business Improvement District to help with security. Cause public, police can't be everywhere. I moved away from voting no to abstaining. But it's gotta be a joint effort. If you don't stop the homeless. By Chastain. As they try to kill that area. When they go to Highland Village. This city is gonna lose so much money. Until I don't think we'll recover in the next ten or fifteen, twenty years. They already coming to the people at Maywood Market, you come out. Of your eatery. Sitting there posted, asking you for money. You feel so uncomfortable. Till you stop going shopping there. That's why they're going to the mountain ranking county. So I, I see Councilmember Lindsay keep fighting. A fight and, and these, uh, business improvement districts, they're gonna catch on in other parts of the city. In time. But as a city. We got to work together. To make sure all parts of this city can move forward. And, you know, I, I was glad to hear Councilmember Lindsay, when she go visit her mother down Canaline Road. You know? When you have a councilperson, a human being. That take the time out their schedule to go hug and kiss their mother. That's a good person. Cause a whole lot of mothers and daughters are fighting. Ain't got hate for each other. So again, I won't vote no, but I will abstain. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, uh, you were about to make me cry, Mr. Stokes. Um, but I, I do want to say that these, these special assessment districts also are using money for security as well. And Funderen, the one we're about to consider now is really struggling. It's right on the edge of Chastain, as you discussed, Mr. Mr. Stokes. And yes, we have a serious problem. And I do think that we need to come together as a body and perhaps create a task force on this matter too. Because it is a serious issue in our city. And, but they are using these special funds for added security to help the businesses in their areas with security concerns regarding, um. You know, the, the, the problems of, of folks who are transient.
Vice President Lee.
Well, uh, Councilwoman Lindsay, I, you know, you and I have talked about this, but once we finish redistricting, I would like to bring you and your groups to come into Ward two and see if we could establish a CID and a BID, um, to help govern ourselves.
All right. I think everybody already got Mr. Speed contact up here, but I'm sure he's ready to help. All right, uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? All right, five, zero, two. Item nineteen.
Order establishing the assessment for the Greater Bellhaven Improvement Assessment District.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstentions two. All right, five, zero, two. All right, item twenty.
Order amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four municipal budget.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Doc, are you gonna handle amending the budget?
Brandon coming in.
When.
Come on.
When will we have the fund balance? It, it, it's all right, Doc. I'll talk to you after the beep. Sorry. I talk to you after the beep, cause the president gonna tell me, we got speeding up.
No, 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 no. I did, that's important question. Look at the timeline on the audit.
So, Councilman Stokes, uh, we are still waiting on the, uh, audit completion, uh, to actually have a finalized fund balance. Uh, with, uh, timeline and I checked with the auditor yesterday. He went back to say he's trying to get some financials from the convention center.
I, 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 I thought that we agreed and wrote a letter saying that we could exempt that so that we can hurry up and get it at such a time, we, we, he can amend it.
Right, and, and the whole thing is for, for, uh, for the firm to provide a disclosure that the audit would not be completed. Somehow he feels it might be best to put in some financials, un-audited. So he talked to the.
Who was somebody?
The, the auditor, right? So he talked to the auditing firm for the convention center. They say they can put some financials together, which are not audited. One is, we, we've gotta move forward, uh, from, from that, right? As long as they provide a disclosure.
Can, can you, can you get another opinion? From maybe another expertise on that? Cause I, I'm, I'm afraid that this convention center and the lack thereof is going to hold us up from being in compliance and push us farther back down. We, we're about to go into another fiscal year. And then the importance of the fund balance is gonna be more importantly this time because we can only expand seventy-five percent of the budget.
Right.
So th- this is going to be. You know, we, we need to really push the urgency and, you know, I don't want nobody just telling us something just to tell us something. And then it causes us to have these delays and delays. So, um, and I've, I've shared, we, we must have it by the close of this month. I mean, we're getting impacted, right?
And, and so this body, uh, did offer that the disclosure will suffice, right? And, and that's all they, you know, they, they need to do. Uh, but for some reason. For matters that we've discussed before, um, and he just feels like he can include the financials in there, so.
Sharon, you coming to say something? Oh, okay. Any, any, any other questions or comments on this? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain. All right, six and one abstention. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the Jackson Police Department and Clearview AI computer software for a subscription term of thirty-six months.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order approving payment of certain invoices for goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department from the Mississippi Animal Rescue League for receiving housing and disposing of animals.
So move.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you so much. Chief, uh. What's our timeframe in the reopening, uh? Of the old. Dog pound?
We're making some, I'm sorry, Tyrone Buckley, Deputy Chief. I'm sorry. Tyrone Buckley, Deputy Chief, uh, Jackson Police Department. Uh, we working towards making some modifications so that we can do that. And that's, it's based on, uh, availability of universal to come out and give us an estimate and us to identify the funds to make the repairs. So I can't give you a specific timeframe.
Will it be this budget year or probably next budget year?
Hopefully it'll be this budget year.
Okay, if we don't get a chance to do it this budget year, we, we'll have some money carried over for next year? So we'll have some monies?
Without knowing that the budget information, I can't speak to that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, uh, we had this discussion and work session yesterday. And it was seen as though that there may be millions of dollars involved. And right now, we don't know a funding source. Is that correct?
Yes, that's one of the problems. But right now, we're trying to do some patchwork. We've been working with, uh. Mr. Wright about identifying some funds to at least get it partially operational this fiscal year.
Could we, uh, legal, um. Come up with an ordinance? That we can put money, add on to a driving speeding ticket or something, two or three dollars? That would go specifically for the police department, for the animal shelter, for dog?
Uh, Drew Martin, City Attorney, the short answer is I don't know, but I'd be glad to look into that. Um. It, it would be difficult, but I, it's a good idea. So we'll look into it and see if there's something the city can do, uh, in, to raise that kind of revenue.
Thank you, uh.
Yeah, real, real quick, yeah. Attorney Martin, uh, I think during budget season, when we make amendments, that we can appropriate a percentage out of those tickets to go toward, uh, because it'd be internally within JPD, so we could do that during budget.
You can do the, you can do it that way, yes.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, uh, Chief Watts a question if I could, please.
Chief Watts?
Chief, um. I think it's something that this council as a whole need to hear about. On Marine Street. Where you had, I think, maybe four juveniles. One, I think they said a young lady was thirteen, one maybe fourteen. Maybe fifteen and sixteen shot up a house. On Marine Street. I, I, I'm just assuming that you knew, and I, I don't know if you did or didn't. And I was gonna ask the chief. But the issue is. Number one, drive-by shooting. We passed the ordinance. Now, I hope we have got possession of the car. If not, could we look at getting possession? But I think it's important that all council members hear about the number and increased numbers in these drive-by shootings, especially by young people. People that's normally in junior high school. Now they drive by shooting and everything. Could you give us any information on the Marine Street?
Um, Wendell Watts, Assistant Chief Patrol Division. Uh, I cannot give any information right now. All that is an un- uh, an ongoing investigation, but I can tell you this, uh, we will release all the information as soon as we're able to. And we will keep the council updated on everything that you've asked for. Yes, sir.
But they are, can we say they are in terms of age, they are?
We, we have juveniles, yes, they're involved.
Juveniles.
We have some juveniles that are involved, yes.
And you know, what make it, what make it this particular situation is what Councilmember Lee saying about these cameras. The camera that the neighbor had is one thing that the police department had a chance to help solve this crime. That's why it's so important that we.
Yes, of course. Of course, all cameras, uh, whether they're on residential or businesses, will be a great investigative tool for us to be able to tap into what the. great investigative tool for us to be able to tap into with the Fuchsia Center and the Real-Time Crime Center. So, yes, it would be, it would be great to get that business ordinance passed for the business to have them. But we would also request that, you know, anybody that has an opportunity to put cameras on their houses, you know, that is good. You know, we're not saying that, you know, everything is dangerous in Jackson, but we want to make sure that we have every investigative tool that we have at our disposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Vice President Lee.
Chief Watts, I think it's important for the community to know that they can also tie in their home cameras to the Real-Time Command Center. They can put cameras in the front of their entrances of their neighborhoods and tie them into the Real-Time Command Center as well. But also, while you're here, wanted to mention the one hundred black men. They had a robbery, a break-in, and I'm wondering if someone could come to talk to them about maybe putting up a blue light camera for that area as well. That is a valuable resource in Ward Two. They offer swimming lessons and a myriad of things for the community. And I just want to make sure that they are safe and that area is safe for the kids that partake in those activities.
Yes, that would be good. We would be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to get that pool fixed over there as well. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, just very quick. If you see wild dogs in a neighborhood, what number should people call?
I encourage people to call six oh one nine six oh one two three four. We want to keep a record of all those calls.
And after hours?
Yes.
Same number?
Same number.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the Director of the Department of Human and Cultural Services to submit a required letter of exclusivity to the Center for Workforce Inclusions, Inc. as part of the application process to receive funding to operate a senior community service employment program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I do.
Yes.
Dr. Scott, can you explain to me what this is? And is this something that the VON Center, Tubaloo Senior Community Center will be taking part of?
Indirectly, oh, excuse me, Pamela Scott, Director of Human and Cultural Services. And I say indirectly because the participants in this program sometimes work in that senior center. And I'll just explain, the Center for Workforce Inclusion is where we get our funding for the, what we endearingly refer to as our senior aide program. But it's actually a workforce development program that is training people fifty-five and older to ultimately become employed. And so those are our senior aides that are placed throughout the city and nonprofit and governmental organizations so that they can gain job skills, so they can become employable. But, yes, ma'am, indirectly, yes, I think at this time, we do have a senior aide placed over there right now.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order accepting the donation of roof repair services from Strong Arms of Mississippi to make needed repairs to the Sykes Community Center's roof and authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding said roof repair.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, one question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Scott, did we not repair this roof recently?
From my understanding, there have been multiple repairs made to this roof and not total repairs, but for the lack of a better word, patching here and there. And this would be a more long-term solution. It would be more comprehensive.
So they told us they were gonna make major repairs, but they patched it. It was all right.
Yeah, I mean, just speaking with care and maintenance, that there have been several issues addressed over the years.
We had a contract with Dixie Roofing, who did Jones in this one.
Well, I don't know who the exact contractor was.
It's all right. Come on, we-
Okay.
Councilwoman Lee.
I just want to thank Strong Arms of Jackson. They reached out to me. They've been waiting to donate this money for the repair of the roof at Sykes Gym and have been waiting to get this on the agenda. So I thank you, Dr. Scott, for making that happen for them.
Thank you to the staff at Human and Cultural and Strong Arms. And this gentleman Jarvis would like to say something regarding this if he's-
Have to get it approved.
Yes, thank you. I would like to speak to-
Say your name for the record.
I'm Jarvis Jones. I would like to speak towards the repair issues. Like, there hasn't, there has not been any repairs to my knowledge since I've been over there. And every time it rains, most of the time, we flood out. So Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, that's when we bring the kids in. But if it's a flood, we can't have the program. It's not safe. It's not healthy. We got leaks in the kitchen and in the area where we play, have the pool table where the guys can run around and, you know, just to be kids. So as far as that is concerned, you know, it's been going on for a long time. Mold, you know, it starts to set in and it gets really, really bad.
Jarvis, this is also a feeding site as well, is it not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I thank you for raising the money internally to get this done. And I'm not sure what happened to the money that we allocated for the roof, but we will look into that.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'm almost certain with Dixie Roofing who had that contract. But that's why it's so important that we make sure these warranties are being utilized in terms of if it need this kind of repair now, it wasn't fixed properly in the beginning. And we should have said something, caught some early on when it was still under warranty. Because a lot of times, they try to take advantage of the city. We got streets in this city that have recently been repaired. And they got potholes in the middle of the night, had not been a year. So, you know, again, we thank this organization for helping because these children need to be able to play without the possibility of falling and hurting themselves. So thank you, especially on city property. Thank you.
It also benefits the senior centers as well because it was once a senior center, but due to the need for repairs, it hasn't been able to be utilized in their capacity. So this generous donation will help us make a major stride towards reopening that site as a senior center and being able to serve more of our seniors on a daily basis.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget for the Department of Human Cultural Services to transfer seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from the contribution to the other agencies fund, to the other professional services fund, to pay for emergency environmental cleanup services that were performed at the Planetarium.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order revising the 2023, 2024 fiscal year budget for the Department of Human and Cultural Services.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order requesting ratification of professional services and approval of payment to Anderson Environmental Services, Inc. for emergency environmental cleanup that was performed at the Planetarium.
So moved.
The first one was for transfer of funds and the second one was for the actual payment.
Second.
All right. It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about, you know, participation and how things are going at the Planetarium?
Well, as far as I know, construction is underway. It's in full swing. Initially, we had anticipated opening the doors maybe August of next year, maybe a few months later than that. But things are going well. Payments are being made. Work is being done. We're in the process of starting to, and you'll hear more about this during budgets, get staff in place for when the doors do open. Exhibits, curriculums, Mike is expert in this area, but this is what I know, that things are going well.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
All right. All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order approving payment for emergency repair services to 107 Calhoun Street to continue compliance with the voluntary consent agreement with the Bon Air subdivision, the City of Jackson and Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Fair Housing, Region Four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order amending the Department-
Mr. President, I want to thank Dr. Taylor. She's easing out. And they handled the senior program. We thank them so much for their hard work and making sure we have good people helping us do their job, do our job in our office and everything. Thank y'all so much.
All right. Thank you so much. And while we pause and do that, everybody look to the back of the room and say, "Happy birthday, Cor."
Happy birthday, Cor.
Admit it, boy.
All right. Go ahead with the next item.
Order amending the Department of Planning and Development's fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second for this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to procure a digital business center to provide the business community access to the city resources with GovLea, Inc., and authorizing payment of twelve thousand dollars to GovLea, Inc.
Second.
It's been moving property second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a release of lien and restriction on transfer against the property of Ms. Prince J. Morgan located at forty-four twenty-four Liberty Hill Road, Jackson, Mississippi, recorded in the Heinz County Land Records for the First Judicial District at list pending book page, book fifty, page four twelve issued for the rehabilitation programs funded with the Community Development Block Grant received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, question, Mr. President?
Yes.
What this item, what would be the overall goal?
Reginald Jefferson, Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development. I apologize. Can you repeat the question?
What's the overall goal for this order?
The goal for this order is basically to release a lien for our housing rehabilitation programs. Any federal funds that are put into a residence for rehabilitation, a lien is placed on that property based on the amount of money that is put into the property. So it could be from five to fifteen years, depending on how much money is put in. For this particular property, let's see. Yeah, seven, roughly seven thousand dollars was put into the property. So because of that, the lien was placed on the property. After a certain amount of time, as I mentioned before, the city is obligated to release the lien.
Okay. Is she? Are you communicating with her? Are you communicating with, who are you speaking with about this particular issue? My understanding, she's-
Yeah, now-
She's not, she's not in a position to talk to anybody.
Now, we have been in communication with, I believe it is her sister, daughter that we've been in communication with. But now, as far as issue, I'm not completely clear as far as the issue that you're speaking of.
Okay, so who's gonna, oh, yeah, please. Yeah, let legal.
Okay. So this is a lien that we placed on a property.
Yeah.
Because we did that rehab project. And that lien is, you know, in case during that five-year period of time, you know, she can't sell it and make extra money off of that improvement. So this is just releasing it. You know, I don't know that it's anything that she needs to even be aware of.
I think-
Unless she tries to sell the property. And then, and it won't be, there won't be a lien on the property anymore.
Yeah, I think his concern is, let's say that this person is not in a position to speak, then making sure there's a power of attorney or somebody else that knows. It's another situation.
She doesn't have to execute anything.
All right.
I mean, this is something we're doing on our side.
Okay.
That we have an obligation to do, to release that lien. We're obligated to release it whether she's aware of the fact that we're releasing it or not.
Okay.
All right.
You good, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, okay.
All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Janice J. Smith, and the Benjamin Wiggins Doing Business as Benjamin Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to implement housing repairs activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Home Production Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries-
Abstain.
Okay, so that's six and zero one. All right. Next item.
Order ratifying emergency procurement of a temporary chiller rental for the Megar Evers Library from Universal Services, LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions?
Question.
Yes, sir.
We want to thank Mr. Wright, number one. Is the chiller, is it already there? I know they had something in the library part, but in the auditorium, it was still a little warm and they trying to feed. So this gonna be both of them or what?
Yeah, Louis Wright, CAO. The chiller is for the main library. The conference room or that area across the hall, they're opening the doors and allowing some of the cool air to flow into that area as well. We had to do something. They got a feeding program going on there, a reading program. So we had to get some, some type of temporary air conditioning in the building.
Now, how soon would they-
I understand it's sufficient to whiff what they have going on right now.
But we thank, I know that library is cool. We had the pro, how soon would they completely make the repairs?
Well, we have to order the parts and it will take probably three to four months in order to get everything in and get it in proper working order. This will help us during the summer months.
Well, we thank you. We thank you, Mr. Wright, because it, the library is cool.
Yeah.
And they can, like they deal with us, they shift us over, but they still feeding with the fans and everything. It helps. But that's better than ninety-five hundred degrees
on children and everybody else who really, really need a library. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for caring. Thank, thank the city and everybody.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing payment of right-of-way bonds from Fisher Brown Brochura Insurance, Inc. for various Department of Public Works construction projects.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Abstain.
Oppose? All right. Item carries four, two, one. Next item.
Order terminating the contract with Utility Constructors, Inc. for sanitary sewer mainline repairs at Lars Street and St. Anne Street and ratifying a contract with Wicker Construction, Inc. for sanitary sewer mainline repairs at Lars Street and St. Anne Street.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright, what happened with the first company?
We'll let legal explain. So the first contractor, we, we were gonna make this repair by just, you know, lining the pipe. When they got out there, they TV'd the line. There was a section of the pipe that just didn't even exist. It was just a mud tunnel. And they originally told us that they could, you know, bore that because it's in a, it was gonna have to be placed in, you know, down a driveway. This is one of those backyard sewers that runs, you know, from one street to another across a couple lots. When they got out there to actually do the work, UCI said that they didn't have enough room to use their drilling rig to do this. And so they just said, "We can't, and we're not gonna, you know, take a, you know, excavator in between, you know, two houses down a driveway." And, you know, they're, they're okay. I mean, they're gonna get paid for what they did. They actually demolished a couple of garages that were impacted by this, you know, cave-in. So they're getting paid. But I mean, that's, you know, it was an amicable termination.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying the procurement of services from the Critic Catcher, LLC and authorizing payment to said vendor.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Where's Critic Catcher gonna be catching It's been moved and properly second on this item. Where's Critter Catcher gonna be catching critters at?
Send them over to Industrial Park.
I have a question.
I got a question too.
Louis Wright, C A O. This is at the, um, the main fire station.
What about City Hall?
We've not authorized it.
The little squir-
We'll have to look into that one.
You should have seen Dr. Morris. That's what I said there. All right, Mr. Griselle.
Mr. Wright, and this may actually take up my discussion. Item number forty-five. Since they tore down the, um, Rex Brown plant and since they're remediating Lake High Co., Shady Oaks, Bel Air, Northwest Hills, probably Ashley Acres, and it's probably really active on the north side of the lake, we're seeing a lot of critters, big critters. One of my constituents had a four-foot king snake in her house the other day. I had a king snake right by my mailbox a few weeks ago. And, uh, we got owls, see falcons, we seeing everything that used to live there. And then, of course, going down North Side Drive, and I did a 311 ticket about the grass being so high. I know we've had a lot of rain, but the critters are starting to take over the area really, really bad. And, you know, I've been in that area forty-five years. I've never seen anything like this before. Uh, in fact, people are afraid to let their little dogs out because you have big birds that are sitting up on fences waiting to take, take the dogs away. And so if we could maybe look at that, um, you know, get these critter folks to look at these critters that are starting to take over Northwest Jackson, I would really appreciate it. And also in Southwest Jackson with the, the overgrown brush, I did have some constituents. One constituent is either Cedar Hills, I think around that Sharon Hills area. She had a python and a moccasin, uh, in her yard. And so we, yeah, we gotta, we gotta really look at that because, you know, the, the, we had the drought and then we had this rainy season and they starting to come out. Uh, thank God we haven't had any one bit. And I know king snakes are not poisonous, but, you know, a lady going into her dining room and you got this four-foot king snake crawling across your floor, that's very, uh, disconcerting. So we could really look into that. I really appreciate it.
We will.
Thank you.
You know, three, you know, three years ago, Mr. Griselle, in, uh, Timber Falls, they found an alligator.
I cook those.
Mr. President?
We hunt those. I wish I knew about that, but yeah, these snakes, these big raccoons and possums and rats, it's bad.
With sweeper taste. Uh, the colony of bats.
Colony of what?
Of bats. That's what they said at the-
Yeah, that's what they had, but what was reported.
A colony of bats?
Yeah, this was at, um, a fire station.
We had bats at the schools.
Are we putting wire around the entrances or?
Yeah, a critter catcher, they came in and removed the, um, the critters and sealed up all the openings where critters were getting in. And that's what they do. They not only take possession of the critters, but they seal any openings where they're getting into attics and basements and different-
So is that why that little robotic looking owl is up there? To keep the bats away?
That's my understanding that it was-
That was to run the pigeons off.
Okay.
It, it seemed to have worked. I haven't seen any in a while. I was kinda skeptical, but it seemed to have worked.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
In the house?
In the house.
Man, Jesus. All right, uh, all, all in favor? Item carries unanimously. Uh, and that also, Mr. Griselle, does that mark your discussion forty-five? All right, uh, item thirty-seven.
Order ratifying the declared state of emergency regarding the May ninth, 2024 severe storm system and reviewing and continuing May ninth, 2024 state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this. All, any questions? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order reviewing and continue August twenty-ninth, 2022 state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order reviewing and continue state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Resolution of the Jaddis, resolution of the Jackson City Council establishing an abandoned property task force.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Councilman Griselle.
I, I, I read the, the resolution, but I guess if, if Councilman Foot can provide more clarity, other than bringing things to our attention, what is it exactly or what else can they do? Because we already know what, what the abandoned properties are, you know, in our wars.
Sure, yeah. I mean, the, so the, the point of, uh, appointing a task force, um, is to get some, uh, and my goal with the task force is to get people from all levels of city, state, federal government, county government, uh, from the nonprofit sector and from law enforcement. Because this is really, you know, at the heart, public safety is critical to the, to getting, our arms around this situation. And to come up with some really big solutions to this rather than trying to do it one property at a time like we do the normal process. So that's the purpose of the task force.
Okay.
So, and, and it's not gonna, I mean, so that's what a question you had.
Well, I, I support this, but is there a way to get that in the resolution? Maybe, maybe I missed it.
Okay, well, I mean, what I can, if you wanted to amend this, I could read, um, let me see what I've got here in a second. This may work as an amendment if you wanted to put it in the task force. Hold on.
Mr. President.
I, I would just like to see, if possible, all the parties that, that are desired to be part of this task force.
Okay, so let me just, some background, and over the past six months, I've went out and started visiting with people, initially starting out with the Secretary of State. They're very, um, focused on this issue. Then from there, went to all the law enforcements at the county, state, um, public, you know, the, um, Public Safety Commission, Mr. Sean Tyndall with the U.S. Attorney. Um, and he was very engaged in this and realizes the, the critical importance of it. And, and then also the nonprofits, I think, have some input. And then hopefully we can get somebody maybe from HUD that can be on the task force as well that can, can, uh, identify some funding and to create a sense of urgency from all these other levels so we can get sufficient funding and not just rely on our own budget. As one of the, on, one of the items states in the, um, in the whereas, I'll just go ahead and read this now and we can, I mean, then one thing we might want to amend. Um, Secretary of State now, whereas the Secretary of State now has 2,431 properties in Jackson on its rolls of tax forfeited properties. And these properties undermine confidence in the adjacent home dwellers and neighboring communities. And the empty residents can become havens for vagrants, squatters, and criminal activity. And the deteriorating condition of these properties can result in the value of properties in close proximity to decline in value. And the quality of life in the neighborhoods and communities with high levels of abandoned property is negatively impacted. And the declining state of the abandoned properties has contributed to the exodus of citizens out of the city, further undermining the vitality of Jackson's economy. And abandoned and vacant properties make it harder for law enforcement to establish high levels of public safety. And whereas Jackson does not currently have the manpower, equipment, or financial resources to take the necessary corrective action on the over 2,400 abandoned properties that threaten the economy and financial stability of the city. And then it says be resolved that, that we'll, um-
At the city council?
We'll initiate a, a task force that will bring, you know, forward recommendations back to the city council on how to address this critical mass of abandoned properties. So with, as an amendment to, to, uh, who might be on the task force, I'll offer this, um-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that, the members can come from law enforcement, all levels of government, members from the nonprofits that serve the inner city, the Secretary of State's office, and other agencies focused on housing to include HUD.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Foot, um, this is great work. Um, well, just, just looking at procedurally.
Uh-huh.
It's a resolution-
Right.
To this body to act.
Right.
Right? So you, you, you're saying be it resolved that we gonna do something, we could just do it. So my, 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 my advice are to make this what it really needs to be, is to make it an ordinance. It gives us the authority we, to set aside a task force. And it, it goes by, it, 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 to set aside a task force with all these agents to do such, such, and such, and such. And you have to spell it out. But all this is, is a resolution. Because when, when you look at your be it further resolved, it be it further resolved that the city council would establish. So you're, you, you're encouraging us to do something, which means that there will be have, there have to come something behind this. So that means that's gonna have to happen anyway. What I'm saying is that we can actually do an ordinance and we actually have the authority to do it based on the way you spelled it out. This is good work. I'm not skirting. We can pass this today, but, but what it does is it tells us to do something else. That's all.
Well, what I'd like to do is, is go ahead and pass this today and we can work on an ordinance if you want to do that and make it more formal.
Okay.
Yeah, and just-
Hold on. Yeah, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Uh, I, I had some similar thoughts. Uh, um, I'm, I'm, I do think this is great and I applaud this effort, Mr. Foot, and I plan to support this resolution. Um, but I think, uh, we need some organizational structure to this and, and how it really works. Um, there, you know, who's appointed, how they're appointed, length of terms, that kind of thing. So this, and I do agree with you, Mr. Banks, that this is just the first step, that then we need to develop an ordinance that truly makes it an, an operational task force within the city. And so I appreciate that, Mr. Foot.
All right, uh-
Mr. President, I have an amendment.
Ho- hold on one second. Uh, Mr. Hartley was next and then I think the city attorney was trying to speak to this. Go ahead.
I'd, I'd like to.
Yell to the city attorney, please.
Okay, uh, Ms., Mr. Mark, Attorney Mark?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I was just gonna suggest, um, I don't think you need an ordinance either. You know, there's a, there is an ordinance that allows the council to create ad hoc committees. Um, you could simply make this an ad hoc committee and then through your meetings and deliberations and, and include whoever it is you choose to include. Uh, because as you said, it's ultimately going to be a, a group that brings suggestions to the city for how to address this issue.
And, uh, just my comment was that, uh, look, we need to get some organization into addressing this issue. And a lot of it is elevating this to a whole nother level, and I think that's needed. A lot of the fine points hadn't been worked out. Councilman, uh, Foot and I discussed this morning, membership on, on the, in the group, uh, goals in the group. A lot of those things haven't been, but I support this because it gets the wheels rolling. And if we need to change the words of subcommittee or whatever, but I see where he's going. And I see the membership that's needed to be brought in. But a lot of the details haven't been drafted up and, uh, uh, look, I'm forgetting something done right away, whatever that something is. Let's go ahead and move forward.
Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh, Mr. President, on the state, the Secretary of State's office contacted us concerning Lutlow Avenue in terms of they were on the list. There was houses on the list, um, that would be torn down. But at this point, they still haven't come and they still haven't torn down these houses. Uh, they are telling us that they're gonna do something, but they never do. And I think this, this, uh, item is one where we can follow up. But I have an amendment that will read as follows, uh, whereas, um, known drug dealers.
Which, 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 whereas, where, where you putting it? Under the first one?
No, it can be under the first one. It come toward the last. It doesn't really matter.
So, okay.
Known, whereas, known drug dealers and or slash criminals, active criminals are prohibited from purchasing such property. What has happened with, uh, the 2,431 properties in Jackson, um, we can show where dope dealers or known drug dealers are the ones who are beginning to purchase a number of these homes. And they call themselves cleaning their money. And we want to make sure that, um, that these properties do not become a part of something negative that's destructive in these neighborhoods. Where you have, uh, people who making this money illegally are now taking these properties and creating, um, I think they call them in certain neighborhoods, uh, what kind of houses?
Trap houses.
Trap houses, that's it.
All right. So move. Councilwoman Lindsay.
Uh, Mr. Foot, how-
That's your motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was a motion. Is there a second? I'm sorry, hold on.
A second.
All right, there, all right, so there's a motion, a second. You get, you got that amendment?
Can we, can we place that on af- after the third whereas?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, after the third whereas, we got a motion and a second after the third whereas.
Yeah.
All right, uh, all in favor of that amendment? All right, well, now we have the item amended. Councilwoman Lindsay?
Yes, I wanted to just wrap back around to what the city attorney recommended and ask Mr. Foot, um, uh, do you think this, would the goals of this task force be accomplished as an ad hoc committee of the city council?
Uh, only if we are allowed to bring other people to the committee.
That's, see, that's, that's what I think.
I don't think it's just, I don't think we've accomplished much, but what I'm trying to make is a statement to the surrounding community of, of, you know, everything within a hundred miles of here in the state that we're serious about this and we're gonna reach out and, and take advantage of the expertise that's out there and the other, you know, resources that are out there. Because like it says in there, we don't have the resources to do this ourselves. So it needs to be a committee that includes these outside people that are, that are, have a vested interest. And I've gotten some feedback just in the last forty-eight hours when it got on the agenda from people who are really, in the same way that we've got volunteers out there like Lock Ward. They're doing, taking it upon themselves to, to, you know, try to improve the community. This is something that I think if we're, if we reach out and have people from the federal, state, and county level with us in the nonprofit world with us, it'll be a more effective commu-, uh, committee.
Thank you. Uh, so it needs to remain a task force.
Okay, that's what-
And I, I agree for that, for that very reason. And that is that so folks can feel that, hey, they're part of, look, sometimes, uh, things go to committee to die.
Yeah, exactly.
This is, this is so important and we want that inclusion. Hey, you are equal member. You're equally responsible state-
Right.
To, to fixing this.
And we need to make sure that we respond to the, the impassioned comments by, uh, Mr. Ernest Ward today and, and Mr. Hope, I believe it was, the others, that they were really on target in, in what they want us to take action. And this is a chance for us to at least, you know, start that process. Anyway.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Foot, we, we can begin working on, uh, the actual creation of that task force immediately.
Yeah.
Because it'd be orders of the city council thereby creating a task force to blah, 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 blah.
Right.
All right, um, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Uh, next item.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson overriding the mayor veto of the May twenty-first, 2024 order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi approving an employment agreement for the Jackson Police Chief, Assistant Chief of Police, and Jackson Fire Chief.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Uh, colleagues just to, uh, whenever there's a veto, it takes a, a super majority vote or a five-three vote. Five-three, five-two vote, yeah, a five-two vote to override the veto. All right, any questions or comments?
Uh, statement, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, um, I dare to say that we have some bad people in this city. And we must untie the chief of police hand. It's as though he's handcuffed. The deputy chief told us today about minors, young people thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, drive-by shooting in this city. Marine Street is historic because it's, where this happened was two or three houses behind Dr. O'Reilly's dentist office, who was one of the first black dentists in this city. And less than a block away from Dr. Jones, who was the first black female dentist in this city, or office. And-
And the number of bad people, bad actors, that's now in Jackson is alarming. We must do everything in our power to help get this city under control. These criminals, young and old, must know, not here. We know this chief of police knows what to do. We know these officers know what to do. We know, number one, that if they have their thoughts, I know they outmanned, undersized, if it was a basketball game, it'd be one against five. But these officers can do it. We just need to get out their way and let them do their job. And given the chief of contract and assistant chiefs of contract, that's a step in the right direction to get a fire chief a contract. It's the right thing to do. And we'll discuss the fire chief especially on the issue dealing with AMR. But, Mr. President, this is a vote to make Jackson safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain?
Five-two.
Five-two? All right, so that means it passes? Okay. All right, uh, item forty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, item forty-two is so important. We're talking about American medical response. It's a shame. We had this conversation recently, and we thought that we had the wherethal, the people so involved, that we were going to get the train place back on the track. At last week's Lynn of the Reef, uh, Mega Evers, elderly lady got sick, fell out. Young man had to pick her up, sell her in a car, get some air on her face. We called for an ambulance. After waiting over forty-five minutes, we called back. They began to talk about Jackson Police Department. They were supposed to call and such and such. That's not what you want to hear. Then they asked for your cell number. Well, I just got this cell phone. I don't know the number. May I speak to a supervisor? They hang up the phone. I had to call the Jackson City Clerk's Office for them to make a call to get an ambulance for this senior citizen. That is not how this supposed to work. When someone is ill, we need to send help right away to help them. If that mean that we should have a number for AMR directly, then let's do that. But all this back and forth about where the police didn't do this, and that people don't need to hear that. We need to either fix this system, or we got to get someone else, or maybe two companies, because this system is not working, and you do not want to wait until your loved one is in a situation where they could possibly lose their life. These issues are too important, and more and more people just say, well, well, I'm not going to see anything. I do not have a problem with AMR. I literally locate it in my ward, but they must do better. They cannot allow any citizen to possibly lose their life because they did not come timely. And how do you hang up the phone on a citizen trying to speak with a supervisor, especially you talking about, what's your phone number? This young lady now, you see her every day, hearing, say, oh, Miss Jones. Everybody love her, she's just that lovable a person. She she fell out, they picked her up, sent her in the car. And then forty-five minutes later, still no ambulance. And that's what we can't tolerate. Now, it's always about, we don't like AMR, that it's nothing about that, it's not who you like. It's about good service that we all deserve. Tell us what you're going to do to correct this. Otherwise, move on. It need to be corrected, or we need somebody else. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Lee?
Drew, can you give us an update on where we are with the the AMR, uh, situation?
Yeah, yes, we got we got two issues. Um, when the city tried to get out of the AMR contract that it's that it's in jointly with the county last year, the county sued, and the judge, uh, ruled in favor of the county and said that the city had to stay in the contract. Since then, there's been new legislation that now requires contracts with ambulance services to permit a mutual aid agreement, is what they call it. But the the point of that is to have a backup service. So if you had if you had to stay with AMR, for example, or whoever your provider was, uh, they would also have to allow you to contract with somebody else, uh, who would be available, uh, when AMR is not available. Um, so so what we're trying to do is is force that, what we would like to do is get that into this current contract so that we have that backup plan. Uh, we'd also like to find another way out, uh, with an argument that's different than what was raised in the initial lawsuit, um, and that's where we are.
You you finished?
Yes, uh, and and I just hope that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but go ahead.
Oh, I was just hoping that the chief of, that the fire chief would be utilized in terms of, uh, some type of reports have to come through, um, the chief and filter down to these council members, because the cause is taking place, it's somebody in our ward, and we need to know about it. Um, so I'm I'm just hoping that, uh, somewhere down the line, that, um, as we try to correct this system that's that's not working properly, that, um, you know, why can't we just call one number? You know, who mandated that we had to call the police department first? Why can't we call AMR directly or the fire department first? Because I, fire department sure most time first. If I had called the fire department, they would have been there to administer some kind of, uh, help for her and make sure that they got AMR there. But by us calling police department, who, as this lady said, was supposed to contact them, well, people don't know that. And then they go with a song and dance about, well, the police didn't contact us and you was both, man, I'm just sending an ambulance. This lady is elderly and in distress, and I think that's what should be the overall idea of what's going on. I want to think the clerks are forgetting there almost as fast as AMR from downtown. But that's the kind of, that's the kind of issues that we have to deal with when we want to make sure we saving older people lives, because the difference between a minute, a second, and life and death when you're older. When you're older, a second could be the difference between where you live or you're dead. So I'm hoping that AMR will recognize they need to fix this system. Stop making excuses, and let's fix it. Thank you.
All right, Chief Owens, I saw that you put your screen on. Did you have something?
Ye- yes. Uh, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate Councilman Stokes bringing this up, because, uh, there are a lot of situations that are going where we not get an ambulance in time or we did not get an ambulance at all. And, um, of course, you know, uh, as Drew said, the jury has ruled against, uh, our request, but, uh, I don't know what happened, but I think we did turn around and and and, uh, and, uh, appealed what the jury has said, but I never heard anything back from this. I don't know where we are on that, but we did appeal it. Uh, also, an RFP that we had done for another ambulance company, all that information would come back through the fire chief's office, we would get reports, uh, and of course, we didn't get that now, and I ain't even, I ain't real sure the county gets. But, uh, all of that stuff would come back through the fire chief's office and our new RFP that we presented and, uh, wasn't allowed to to to, uh, have it to go through. So, uh, I just want to say that there are, there are some people, there are some situations where people out there dying because of lack of ambulance service.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman. Follow up a damn.
Drew, forgive me, have we set up, if I didn't hear this, have we set up the mutual aid agreement to assist the city with ambulatory services?
We've reached out to the county and AMR about it and are trying to engage in some negotiations. If they don't agree, then we're trying to, then we're still determining what action we can take. The statute as it's passed will require that kind of provision under new contracts. It's unclear whether it's required for existing contracts. The existing contract with AMR in Heinz County expires in twenty twenty-six, and we certainly don't want to wait that long to have this fixed.
Definitely not, but do we have to go through the county, even though the judge has, I I mean, even though the legislature has passed it?
Yeah, the, yeah, the problem we have is that the city entered into some sort of interlocal type agreement with the county to provide ambulance services to all the citizens of the county, uh, several years back, and that's the, that agreement is what the judge is basing his decision on currently that doesn't allow us out.
So who is responsible if someone dies?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, it's a great question.
All right, Councilman Hartley?
Yes, and, uh, and maybe this could be directed, but I was at the scene at the same time. We waited there at the car with her. I waited there at least ten minutes or so, and then I checked with Councilman Stokes before I left. And I went on to the Mega Evers home and talked and 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 went through a lot of other stuff. Passing back by, they're still in that same car. Councilman Stokes is still there with them, you know, so whoever, whether it's our fire department getting involved or Attorney Martin, we need to treat this like life and death issues, because it is, it is just that, and whatever we need to do to increase that, uh, response time, I will be voting and I will be supporting that. So I don't know what kind of magic or what kind of strategy you have there, Attorney Martin, but we need to elevate this thing. We need to put this forward, because again, it is a life and death issue.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, all right, uh, Mr. Stokes, you had summer feeding?
Uh, Mr. Pr- Mr. President, I know it's been a long, I'll hold it to our next meeting, please.
Okay. Councilman Hartley, you have pothole repair program?
Uh, yes, and I I think, uh, we may need to, was there someone here prepared to discuss that today from, I think, are you prepared to kind of describe our program and, uh, because really, I'm not, I I just want to know, you know, how things are being done, what are the limitations, what are your challenges? I'm not seeing the potholes repaired in my in my area sometimes. I call Jackson Water when I, when they're attributed to a water-related issue, but just general pothole, I wanted just an update on on the status of our program.
Sure. Louis Roy, CAO. The, uh, pothole program, as many of you know, uh, if you know the pothole, you report it through nu- three-one-one, and from there, it'll go to paved streets. Paved streets will, uh, come out and make the necessary repairs or or in terms of that pothole. Now, in terms of utility cuts that are done by other utility companies, it's on that utility company to come back and repair that utility cut, uh, in that area. But we are gathering that information through three-one-one and passing that information on to paved streets for repairs.
Okay.
As far as I know, things are going going as well as can be expected. We have, um, um, asphalt, um, contracts out there where we're getting the asphalt so that we can go out and make those repairs.
Okay, and, uh, so what are the wait times? Someone called in and there's maybe a three or four foot hole in the middle of their streets, and folks are complaining for for busting their tires on it. From the time they call in, are we looking at weeks, a month, or do you know the wait time that they, you know, because I have some folks claiming that, hey, they wait a long time.
Yeah. I don't know the lead time, and it depends on the actual pothole. If it is a water break, then that has to be.
I understand, it's Jackson Water, and and I'm, I would call them, and I'm all all over them, but there are some that's just, uh, you know, the Yazoo clay has has is sucking, and there's a pothole, or water gets in an area, there's a pothole. And I I guess I'm I'm not seeing the crews out fixing, uh, things, and I'm I'm wondering, are there a problem with that? Or what is the wait time on it? How long can we tell people to wait?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any problems. If there's some specific areas, can you just let me know, and we can let you know what's going on with that area?
Okay, and I, if you would, see if you can get the wait time, so I can tell folks when they come up to me, hey, we got this major pothole at this corner, this corner, like at, uh, Castile and, uh, Raymond Road, we've been waiting on it for months, uh.
That, yeah, that is a, that, yeah, right there.
Yeah, I know that, I reported to Jackson Water and so forth, but I don't know is is there is any part of that's related to the city, but if you could, see if you can get me a time on, uh, some kind of wait time, so I can tell people, hey, look, from the time you reported it, right now, we're looking at two weeks, a month, whatever.
To to help clarify what I believe, uh, Mr. Hartley, is there a legal requirement that after they make a utility cut, where they have so many hours and or days to repair it?
I'm not aware of a legal requirement.
You're not aware of there there being a legal requirement? Can we prop up an ordinance that requires them to have seventy-two hours to repair after a cut?
That's a legal question, we'll have.
Can legal, Drew? Can you look at that?
I'm here. Yeah, I'll look at it. You're talking about having to requiring Jackson, requiring Jackson Water to make the repairs within a certain timeframe, is that the question?
Yeah, actually, my question was more, uh, focused on city's program and the city's effort. I mean, I'm, uh, when when I see that there's a utility cut, there's a water leak, something like that, but I'm having all my folks call in at five hundred, fifty-two hundred. So now I'm asking about their city's program to repairs on. Is it solid? Are we going out? What is the timeframe in the city responding? Are there contract problems? Are there asphalt problems? Just how are we doing with that program?
So, yeah, you don't know, based on what you're saying, what he was telling you is that if they make the utility cut, if Jackson Water or Atmos, anybody make the utility cut, they're responsible for patching it. The city is not.
I, and I understand.
So to take it to the next level, since the city is not on the hook for doing it, and there's no program to do it, then to take to the next level is, can we require them to do it in a certain timeframe so that we won't have that 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 problem?
Well, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. President, but I wasn't, I wasn't asked, you can push an ordinance if you like on that. My question was specifically on city and our ability to, for the city of Jackson to repair the potholes along our roads and getting a response time. Not all potholes are water-related, and I'm talking about the non-water-related potholes, the, uh, all non-related potholes. Do you have the funding? Okay, how are we doing with program, personnel, et cetera?
Okay.
And what is the time, our response time for those non-water-related potholes?
I apologize, I thought you said ones that Jackson Water did. All right, go, go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Hartley?
Yes, ma'am.
We will look at the three-one-one records and see if we can come up with a timeframe so that we can provide you with that information. We do not have it. Uh, weren't weren't expecting the question, and, you know, we appreciate it.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Lee?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Wright. I know where you all day long, um, but thank you for your help with Nakoma Drive. Um, they were, you know, adamant about getting it fixed properly, and you came in and did it in a very timely manner, and I appreciate you so much. Um, also, just while we're talking about potholes, just wanted to bring up that huge pothole on Forest Avenue, a hanging moss. It's right before the traffic light. Also, that traffic light there, that intersection is still blinking, so I need I need help with that. It's it's been ongoing for a while, um, so please, just put that in your in your books.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wright, uh, appreciate the job you have done, but how soon will we get a public works director? And I hope we'll look at. And I hope we'll look at Leroy Lee at Heinz County, he worked for the city, he noted landscape and everything else. Put a pin in that. I am concerned, I think the question that Councilman Banks was asking was that at one time in the city, if a, a problem, a pothole, or whatever else was turned in, and it wasn't repaired within seventy-two hours.
That's right.
That the city would be held liable, and the city would pay. Now, I don't know when it stopped, because a lot of people, they used to make the city respond quickly and make the necessary repairs. And I think that's what the citizens want. They want us to fix the problem, but if we're not gonna fix it, they want us to pay them, and we getting people who are breaking, they are breaking rims, they're bursting tires, and everything else, but yet they not getting paid, and they blaming the council more than anybody else. We had one gentleman who came, and he met with the city, and he thought that they were gonna do, do something to repair, paying for his rims and everything, they didn't, and he went out telling people that he had to go buy some more himself. I think that's where we lose the citizens at. Things that we used to do that made citizens feel better, because they felt like we cared and they were made whole. We need to go back to those kind of things. What we're talking about Jackson Water, but first should be the city of Jackson. We need to get our house in order. And first of all, let's bring in a public works director, and let's look at Leroy Lee at the county as somebody who wouldn't have to learn the landscape. And second, we need to pay people when we are damaging these vehicles, because we have not done something. So I, I agree with what Councilman Harley was saying, because he's hearing from his community meetings, and we got to let these citizens know that they are important. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, any, any other questions or comment on that? Yes, sir?
Make sure I'm clear here. Jackson Water and utilities and ambulance and all, that's one part of a problem, or a solution. The other is our city of Jackson and its own staff. And I want to make sure we have a robust program to where we can tell our citizens anything that falls within the city purview. We're quickly on it, we have the funds, we have the personnel, and we're out there, and you can expect this to be repaired within this amount of time. Just to be clear, thank you.
All right, we heard you.
That concludes the discussion. Item forty-six, monthly financial reports is required according to section twenty-one forty-five thirteen of the Mississippi Code, annotated in nineteen-seventy-two. I just gave the clerk a break. If you would signify if you received it by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that concludes, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We will have a prayer rally tomorrow at Cornerstone Baptist Church, eleven eighteen Marley to King Junior Drive. We ask that all preachers and evangelists and apostles come, and let's pray for the city, let's pray for the county. I hope we'll close the meeting in honor of Deputy Evan Wells, Mr. Frank Stuckey III, Pastor Jimmy Burr Senior.
Yeah.
Dr. George Everett Barnes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Councilman Harley for being speaker at the Reef Land, for Mega Ever, want to thank everybody, helped with the parade and everything else, because the celebration we had in Mega Ever was the largest in the United States of America, really the largest in the world, and we still remember Mega and him giving up his life. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, just to everyone out there, have a happy Juneteenth week. This is where we go back and celebrate the last free, the official freeing of the slaves. I think it was in Houston or around Houston, Texas area, or in Texas. And like for folks to participate in all the events and just have a joyous day, and remember those in our past that have done so much to get us to where we are today. Thank you.
Dr. Mark?
Okay, I, I'd first like to offer condolences to the family of Louis Ratliff, who passed last week. He spent, he worked for the city for a long time. He was a staple, looking back there at the cameras, watch, he livestreamed and worked for Peg for years. So like to send out condolences to them. I'd also like to announce the Department of Parks and Recreation's Pre-Juneteenth Family Street Festival. And they're saying pre because we know Juneteenth is tomorrow, but this event is taking place today at five PM at the Convention Center Complex. It's free admission. There will be fireworks to play, display at dusk, but they'll have pop-up shops and food vendors and bouncy houses and all those things for the kids. So face painting, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree photo booth, just a lot of activities for the community. So that's today at five PM at the Jackson Convention Center Complex. And happy Juneteenth to everyone.
All right, and happy birthday, Cor. All right, we appreciate you. Any, any, any other?
Oh, we are closed tomorrow for Juneteenth. We want to make that announcement as well, so that everyone knows that this, it is a legal holiday for the city of Jackson.
All right. Anything else to come before this body? This meeting is adjourned.